Somebody at Redlands told me Saturday that.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Fluviana County Board of Supervisors regular meeting to order May 18th, 2022, but you please stand and recite the pledge and a moment of silence with us.
The flag, United States of America and to the Republic. What you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our five o'clock meeting this afternoon, we're having Fluviana County Public Utilities Plan and Work Session. And then we're going to have a closed meeting and we'll have dinner and then we'll come back to the regular seven o'clock agenda.
Thank you, members of the board. So today we've got members from Dewberry Engineers, the county's engineers that have been working on the county's master water and master utilities plan, rate analysis and asset management plan. And also they've been, you know, part of the county, working on the design crossroads project, engineering for that as well. So I think we'll go ahead and get started. They've got a presentation. And again, there's a lot of information here today and, you know, we're not expecting any major decisions to come out of this, but it's just more informational for you to have an opportunity to ask questions in your board packet. There was some very meaty data there on the three plans, the utilities master plan, the asset management plan, and the bill and rate structure proposed structures. And these are all drafts. So again, you know, we've got those three documents linked up as well as they've got a presentation, a little more high level. But like I said, we can go as deep in the weeds as the board wants to go. So, so with us today, we have Richard Kinchlow with Dewberry and Dan Villhauer with Dewberry. So I think, Richard, are you?
Sure.
We'll have Richard get started.
Got that. Good evening. So the presentation today, we'd like to give a high level overview of the utility master plan, rate analysis and the asset management plan we recently completed for Fluviana County. If you had a chance to review, great. If not, we can answer any questions you may have. So next slide, please. So to start with the purpose, the sort of charter that we came up with was to provide Fluviana County and its public works department with a roadmap for its planning of improvements, upgrades, extensions and expansions to meet future needs while maintaining cost effective water and wastewater service to the growing number of county customers. So with that in mind, sort of the steps that kind of went into the overall master plan first began with data collection, partnering with with public works to really understand how everything is set up and structured, what their long term goals were, coordination with other departments, including economic development and planning. We then completed a comprehensive hydraulic analysis of both the Zion Crossroad system and then the Palmyra and Fuzz D systems as well. We also completed a comprehensive asset management review. So we visited all the sites where either pump stations, tanks, treatment plants were noted, any potential deficiencies or items that may need additional maintenance or repair. Coupled that with the data that we identified in the master plan as potential improvements to meet the growing needs and then sort of bundled all of that up in a capacity fee analysis. So we know moving forward, what needs to be charged to hit those goals.
And just remember too, this is kind of like, was it a 25, 30 year plan?
Yes, yeah, 20 year plan.
It's a 20 year plan. And just remember from the board standpoint, utility master plan was one of the board's strategic initiatives that's on the current plan too. So we're we're hoping, we're hopefully going to finalize this plan here really soon. And a lot of this information also kind of feeds into our ordinances for moving forward with with really starting to get customers hooked up to the science crossroad system.
Correct. So to start, I'll go through each system. So the central Fluviana Utility Systems, including both Fork Union Sanitary District and Palmyra, will sort of go through the water system, the existing system, look at some of the capacity concerns and then talk through the improvements overall and then do sewer and then switch over to Zion Crossroads. So again, we had mentioned the asset management piece. So these are some photos from our site visits. Again, noting some of the rust that could potentially lead to failure in the future. Sort of the current condition. And we also provided estimates for that work. On the next slide. These are some of the current, the current work that's being done. So again, we did the site visits over a year ago. And instead of waiting for everything to be finalized, public works was proactive and started doing some of these improvements, which we've noted in the report. Just to acknowledge the progress that's being made. So even though, so those numbers have been taken out of the rate analysis. But in, so a lot of this, these issues have already been addressed.
And remember, these were for both the Omaha Hundred, Omaha Hundred and Morriswell. There was a lot of work with the sand filters, the repiping in the, in the buildings. And there was some other work, I think something with the, with the wellheads and stuff like that.
There were some new piping, which you can see in the picture really well, believe some coatings as well, electrical improvements. I believe this is, these photos are all from Morris Water Treatment Plan. So the other phase of the asset management plan, we essentially wanted to do a criticality analysis. So we took two groupings of criteria, one for likelihood of failure, one for consequence of failure. And this more or less pertains to the distribution system itself. Since we can't physically lay eyes on that infrastructure and inspect it, we use things to sort of indicate what the quality of the materials would be or the infrastructure that's installed. So this includes age material going into the likelihood of failure and then consequence of failure, likelihood also would cover pressure, operating pressures in system. Consequence of failure has more to do with if something were to break, what impact would that have on the system? So areas that serve schools or other, other public entities would have a higher rating. Critical infrastructure between, for example, Morris Well and the distribution system, which is usually a singular line, that would rank higher than a portion that's looped and has multiple connections. And then, so once you score everything based on the likelihood of failure, consequence of failure, the colored graph kind of gives you the indication if it falls, if you have high, high likelihood and high criticality, it's a more pressing issue. And then the lower end, if you have a low score on both, then you have a lower criticality. Next slide, please. So this is sort of a map. And I will say that the color coding is relative. So red does not necessarily mean bad. It just means better than other items. But you've got the LOF, the likelihood of failure on the left and the center is the critical. So you can see the line that goes out to this area and the Carries Brook School is one of the most critical. It's also an older line. It has high pressures and low lying areas. And then finally, the BRE, Business Risk Evaluation, on the right hand side, that can compiles both of those results and gives you sort of that comprehensive score for each of the assets. Which we use this when we were looking at the hydraulic portion to make sure that if there were areas of concern that they were being addressed with the future planning.
Did you, did any of these maps show where the wells are?
They are, we have another map that shows the well locations. It's not as clear on this map. Next slide, please. So this is a map of the existing system. On the left hand side, you've got the Palmyra area and north is sort of left and up a little bit, not quite north is up. The Pleasant Grove system really serves the park and the school. It's a pretty isolated public system, but it really serves, you know, only public facilities. It's not serving the general public directly. And then the Fuzz D system, more on the right side, that shows the water treatment plants, the WTPs, those are wells that require treatment. Morrison and Omaha Hundred are both two of the larger producers. The other wells have lower yields, but still supply water to the system. Those are indicated sort of throughout. And.
And Morris Wells, well, that's on, that's along the road.
Yeah.
They are pretty close to each other. Yeah. So once they connect to the system, there's actually a looped portion there. So in that area specifically, if there were to be a line break, there's sort of an alternative path. So water can still get out to the vast majority of the customers. On the next slide, really what this is showing, we've got the proposed, the blue represents the proposed development that was identified. So we sat down early in the process with administration, public works and economic development planning to understand where sort of development was anticipated. We were to pinpoint some of those areas in both systems. There was far less development anticipated in Fuzz D. It was more maintaining the current customers and then some additional development sort of spread throughout. So currently, the well system is about at capacity, which is a big driver for the James River Water Supply. So currently, if, if the growth patterns were to continue, sort of as they have been. Let me turn this off because that's going to keep ringing.
Happens to us all.
I know. I thought I had put it on do not disturb, but it did not. All right, let's see. So wells are currently about at capacity. So we need the additional, well, the water supply with James River. The dash line represents some additional industrial demand that could potentially come to the Fuzz D area. So in talking to staff, the, there are a few parcels that it sort of identified for that industrial development. As a planning number and based on some of the inquiries that the county has gotten, we assumed that that demand total would be about one MGD, one million gallons per day. So the dash line includes that portion of the flow, which essentially you would need to more than double what the proposed capacity would be just to serve the area to account for that additional demand.
And just remember too, with the James River Water Authority Project and what Dominion has proffered to the county, once we get that intake, I mean, we will have access to half of the, half of the allotted amount from the James River project, which is 8.6 million gallons per day, split 50 50 Fluvan and Louisa. So we'll definitely have the water supply portion of it.
Yeah. So then ultimately with James River, I believe Fluvana gets about six million gallons per day total. With the industrial demand, we're not quite at two million gallons per day. And then Zion Crossroads is around four. So it ends up, it is below what the ultimate capacity is there. And it's on crossroads more so, but the demand projections are just at their projections. We don't know exactly where things are going or exactly what the demand will be. So this is something that should be tracked with public utilities, public works moving forward. But these are sort of the long term goals to make sure that we have the supplies available for what we're anticipating.
And again, when you're looking at like, for instance, the the, the park that's yet to be named, the Commerce Park or the Business Park down in Fork Union, you know, you could get one, a large warehouse or something that is maybe a low water user, or it could be someone that is a high intensive user. And so those are some of the things that, you know, you kind of have to kind of project ahead, what that looks like and kind of plan for that.
Absolutely. So next slide, please. So this is the map essentially showing the improvements that were identified. So improvements are color coded based on the year that they were anticipated. So we did, we did extend the first period from today, 2022 out to 2030. And then the other periods were 2030 to 2035. And then the final period was a 10 year period as well, because it's such a far outlook. We wanted to make sure that we captured sort of as much as possible. We also show on the right hand side, the, the different offsets for Dominion, based on that agreement. And there was one project identified in that, within that radius to help close some of the, to close that loop on the back end to both extend water, to make more water available to some of those homeowners as well as provide additional redundancy in case of a line break. And this area is generally higher in pressure based on the asset management plan.
So Fuzz D will always be an existence and will never be able to take wells down.
So the, we do have up at the top or sort of on the right hand side, following the James, we've sort of indicated a band where the intake may be. When we were working through this, and I don't believe it has been pinpointed yet, but we know it's going to be somewhere along the James. The previous plan had shown the water line coming up, which is, which is there in the black.
This, this is a, where, where the work is happening right now, this is a very close proximity to where that intake's going to be. And we're moving.
Yes.
We've got good progress with the James River Water Authority moving ahead with that project right now.
So essentially what this shows, there's the red box there connecting to the, the raw water line. That would be a location where we would propose putting a booster station in the storage tank for raw water. So when the treatment plant and Fuzz D is needed, that water can be pumped to the plant to keep that in service. And, and then Fuzz D can sort of operate as its own standalone system. Ultimately, that water treatment plant would replace the wells and then the wells could be kept for emergency use or for other purposes. But the system would no longer rely on those wells. The treatment plant would, would take care of that need moving forward.
And the one thing too about that is, you know, that's, that's a conversation that the engineers will have to kind of, one, Morris and Omaha Hundred are larger producing wells. So from a redundancy standpoint, and since they've been, they've been rehabbed, those may be good wells to kind of keep, keep in the inventory to kind of keep as, as a backup. Whereas some of the smaller, lower yielding wells, you know, it may not be necessary to keep those, keep those connected. But when you look at this, when you look at this chart here, you can see the lines in black kind of show current existing system. I don't know, I didn't see a red line. Oh yeah, the red line down here around the Brimmo area, that is to kind of loop the system. You know, and it shows the dates that those would be. And then kind of a longer future line, some of this blue line could go from here down in Fork Union all the way up into Palmyra. Again, that's looking at, you know, 2035 to 2045. But you know, it's conceivable that the county could, could do that sooner. But like I said, this is a long range plan for, for utilities for the county.
Well, I mean, the two wells, we won't be able to use, correct?
Two of the wells, correct. Per the, per the Dominion Agreement, the ones down here, ones in West Bottom and ones in Brimmo, we have to take those offline.
So we'll be down, was it three wells?
No, we'll be down to, well technically we'll be down to five wells. I think we have seven wells right now. With those two wells off, that'll bring us.
Yeah, that's one up in Carries Brook.
Yeah. Yeah, there's one here, there's one there, one there, one up there, and there's one somewhere else. And I just don't recall where it is right now.
Is that that little piece of land right there beside the Weber City?
Probably we have got.
I mean, that, that, no, I'm talking about the, there's a well spot we had right beside Weber City.
That's, or. I believe that is, oh, what's, what is that? Yeah. Yeah, that's the Weber City well. There's a Owens well, the Owens well, actually the county leases, leases that we don't own that. And then there's a couple others spread throughout. Well, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry.
When you said per the agreement, you mean with the agreement with Dominion?
Correct. Per the agreement with Dominion, since two of our ground, groundwater wells are within that legislative radius, we will be taking those offline.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I should note for those that are here, Mr. O'Briens online driving here.
Are we talking anything about the pipes that are about forty seven years old?
Right. So the pipes that are currently installed are PVC pipes. So they generally have, I would say, a life of 75 to 100 years. So at this point, talking with the staff, there doesn't appear to be any concern as far as the materials go. But again, that's something that should be maintained. I believe most of the break history was sort of around the Brimmo area where pressures are higher, normal pressures.
The, the only thing is, say, if I have, if a line is broken outside of my house, fixing it, they have to turn it off. They're not just going to turn me off, they're going to turn everybody off the line. And they were thinking, I thought there was a way that you could still keep other people on the water line. If you had a breakage, if you install some kind of, which probably.
Like a loop?
Yeah.
So.
I think that's what the red line is for.
The red line will serve that purpose as well. Yes.
Because right now, Mrs. Booker, if you see, you know, these, these black lines are the existing lines right now, if you're, if you go down to right around West Bottom, you know, again, right now, this water line's not necessarily in there. So if, if, if something were to break right here, you're going to lose water going down to all those residents down towards West Bottom. Well, if this red line is installed, then there's a loop going back to those potentially. So it wouldn't take everyone offline.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I'm going to ask one question here. I'm going to try to keep my questions minimal. I'm looking at Spring Road. So Spring Road doesn't form a loop right there?
Correct.
It, it only, I don't know why it only covers three quarters of that road and not just a complete loop right there.
Spring Road is a loop.
It is a loop, but they don't come all the way up.
The water lines, the water line doesn't loop all around from West, West, West Bottom or all the way around Spring Road.
See where it stops right there.
Yeah, right, right around there.
You may be interested in that.
Well, that's, so that project would help to close that loop and then provides that redundancy so that if there is a break, you still have an alternate feed and you're not out of water.
And remember too, part of some of the Dominion money for within this radius, some of the money for that is to install lines on roads that currently do not have water lines existing in, in those areas or replace lines, should they need to be replaced?
Right. And then from the master plan perspective, we're showing sort of the main lines. If there's a smaller line that offshoots, we don't, aren't necessarily capturing that. But I think that's the water line extension would be within the dash line there at the, on the bottom right hand side. I'll also mention the sort of pink parcels that are colored are the areas where some additional development was anticipated. The one right next to the, the water treatment plant, that's the site for the Commerce Center that Eric was talking about earlier. And then we do show there's a blue line essentially running from the loop there, like Eric said, all the way up to Palmyra. We've had, have that broken down into two phases. So one would be installing it up to Carries Brook to help provide again, some redundancy, since that is a critical portion of the system. And then the thought there being, if you have the water line there and then potentially in the future sewer as well, that would help facilitate additional economic development and then sort of open up that corridor once the utilities are installed. For water and Fuzz D, I believe that's all. Were there any other questions on water before we move on to sewer?
It might've been said, what was Fuzz D started, built?
It was, yeah. Right.
Yeah. So 68, 69. So yeah.
Because that's when all the residents were paying tax.
Yeah.
And then that's when Jerome ran to the board in 76 to try to get that, get around that and that's when all the other water.
So, so early 70s, sometimes when it probably, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So again, you know, it's a 45, you know, 45, 50 year old system almost, you know, some of it. Yeah. Next slide.
Next slide, sure. First, so for sewer, there's a lot less to see here. Fuzz D has pretty limited sewer. There's just sort of the pockets of the central Carries Brook. And then the Palmyra system and which has its own treatment plant. This becomes pretty interesting because the, and we will get into it more in the next slide, but we did look at one of the limiting factors for development in this area is going to be sewer, because there's very limited nutrient load allocation, which is what you would be required to have in order to discharge the treated wastewater. There are two additional treatment facilities in this area. One is at Carries Brook Holdings, which is just next door, and then the FUMA plant as well. So if you go to the next slide, again, looking at sort of the, the normal projected growth in the green dash line, you've got the red line sort of shows the, the current capacities of all of those permits sort of combined. So one strategy moving forward would be taking those, those permits that you already own and you can bubble them because they're all discharging effectively to the same body of water. And when you bubble them, you can sort of use that, that total allocation at different locations to ultimately meet your, your treatment needs. So in doing that, the red line kind of shows you, you have just over 200,000 gallons per day in a capacity. So again, it's based on the nutrient piece, which has greatly affects Chesapeake Bay is the, is probably the big buzzword. And using limits of technology, we can, we can reasonably treat the water at that flow rate and still maintain the discharge limits. And that would cover you from sort of the normal type of development. However, looking forward, the blue dash line includes the portion of the flow associated with the, the Commerce Center. So without doing something else to acquire additional nutrient load allocation or reducing your discharge, it would not appear that you could bring in a large one MGD user in Fuzz D. So a few different things there. One would be acquiring a treatment facility in the area, acquiring that nutrient load allocation, which is essentially, they don't exist anymore. So you have to get them from an existing permit. So you could acquire someone's nutrient load allocation if they're willing to give it up. Again, bubbling those in with the permits you already have. And then on the next slide, sort of shows a more regional, a regionalized approach. So if you, if you were to bubble all the permits, you could treat the waste centrally and then slowly start decommissioning the existing smaller treatment facilities that you have, which generally it's cheaper to treat at one location. which generally it's cheaper to treat at one location. So when we we have sort of two, two alternatives there. So currently, we have co-located the wastewater treatment facility at the Commerce Center, since that's where most of your flow is going to be. Alternatively, Palmyra wastewater treatment plant could be improved to accept that waste. Again, using the permits bubbled for the nutrient load allocation. And then there would be with both options, a series of pumping facilities. The dark gray lines that are sort of shown throughout, that's more of a long term. If you were to serve the area by gravity, how you could potentially extend that to the existing customers. I would say that's probably outside of the planning period of this study, but we wanted to show the option more short term, you would put in some larger facilities similar to how design crossroads was set up and then sort of grow the system from there. We did indicate there's sort of a bubble at the top. Generally, these locations for the treatment plants are not meant to be specific recommended locations. It's more general idea of where it would make sense to put them. So again, if you were to acquire either, well, the the Fuma wastewater treatment plant has the largest allocation in the area. So that would be the best option or the the most recommended option. The Carries Brook Holding is also, it's a smaller allocation, but there is, they already have an outfall there that could potentially be utilized initially and then upgraded in the future. So there are a lot of options here, but I would say the number one takeaway is in order to facilitate the Commerce Center development that has been discussed, something has to be done to acquire additional nutrient load allocation or the Fuzzy area would not be able to grow.
And and just one thing too, when when Richard's talking outflow, again, for sewer, you know, we gotta have, there's gotta be a water source, some type of creek, rivers, stream, and usually the better the flow, the better the outflow of of that of that source of that treated, treated affluent.
One question I would have there is something I've talked about possibly designed across our area with some type of sports complex where we could use nutrient affluent order of the fields.
Right.
And gain nutrient credits.
Yeah, I had talked to, I think I talked to Dan, Dan about that, about, you know, because Louisa does that up at Spring Creek. They use some of the affluent and maybe Richard, you'd rather speak more eloquently about it than I can.
Well, so that would be you, so if you did not do the additional nutrient load allocation, you could potentially consider a reuse application, but you would have to find a user that was willing to accept a hundred percent of your discharge, since you can't discharge the treated waste basically to surface water.
It's usually reused makes a lot of sense if you have a user that's new to buy. But it usually works really well and it balanced with a outfall location. Because you don't, otherwise you have to store. So if you did it for irrigation, really affluent for irrigation when there's not been frost the ground. Usually then you'd have had what, seven months of storage, so you'd have more of the. So like for sign crossroads, they have, they send it to the golf course, you know, four or five months a year. And the rest of the time they discards it south.
So. So it would be helpful in 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 all areas of the county if if there's if there's a balanced approach of of having a user being able to use it as well as having some type of system to 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 let it go to. Next slide, yes.
Uh, so skipping over design crossroads, I guess, were there any other questions in the Fork Union area or Palmyra before we move on? Okay, so design crossroads, again, this is an existing an existing map, so we've got, this is everything that's been constructed to date. The dash line on the left hand side is a portion of line that had been designed. I know that we're currently working through some funding options there to move that forward. But generally, we've got the new elevated storage tank right at fifteen and two fifty, which is fed by the DOC Water Treatment Plant. And there's another Fluvana County owned booster station to fill that elevated storage tank, which is a great backbone for the system and should should spur a lot of economic development along that corridor. Similarly, on the water, the water supply capacity side on the next slide. We've got the orange, the small sliver of orange is the DOC supply, which is currently available. The blue section is the full allocation from Louisiana County Water Authority. There is an initial four hundred thousand gallon portion that'll be available sooner. And then ultimately, the two million gallons per day is the full allocation available from Louisa with improvements to the new plant.
Yeah, up to four hundred thousand gallons a day, the county can hurt, can get purchased water or the treated, the treatment of the water to the county. Anything above that four hundred thousand, we would have to, we would have to partner with Louisa to upgrade their plant in order to to treat the extra capacity or the county would have to do something completely separate on its own.
Right. And then the the green is sort of a proposed water treatment plant that would treat directly the the raw water from James River Water Supply without going through the Water Authority. So plenty of water capacity available to design crossroads with these improvements. At the end of this planning period, based on the projections, it does show that you would use about the full four million gallons per day. But then you also have the buffer with the additional capacity from the Louisa side as well. So definitely in good shape there overall. So next slide. And then sort of what do we do with the water? How do we get it to where it needs to be? We have two options again for treatment of the water. One option would be to build a water treatment plant generally in the area of the the new elevated storage tank. That's the high ground of this area, so mostly then it could flow by gravity to the other portions of the system. And again, it's also good to co-locate your facilities when possible. This from an operability standpoint. Looking at the current route of the raw water line, it does appear running it from the Louisa side down to fifty. Again, very high level would be the cheapest approach, which is that gold orange color on the right, bringing it to the water treatment plant there with option one. Alternatively, there's the dashed yellow line sort of parallel to the black and blue lines that raw water line could be extended down to fifty to DOC. And either a new facility or an upgraded facility could be constructed there. I know that DOC has expressed potential concern of partnering on that type of effort. So it's included in the plan, but there's still a lot of work as far as logistics, how that would actually work that still need to be ironed out. But either option would serve the needs of the county for the for the planning period that we studied here.
And again, some looking at some of these parcels and the colors associated with them, you know, the the pink and the blue and the purple just kind of shows potential years of development of some sort. And again, some of these are, some of these are estimates, looking at them, some of them, you know, we know that they're they're active, active parcels for for wanting to get development. And some of them are, maybe something happens with those down the road. But you can see they're generally located right along two fifty.
And the the gray line is the county line.
Yeah, right here, this is, yes, this is the county line right there.
The gray shaded lines are are the, I think, the CPA, Community Planning Area, which was more, I think, of a of a suggestion of kind of where the development would go. Again, we had worked with Planning Administration Economic Development to sort of identify these parcels based on past inquiries or, you know, what what is prime, prime real estate or what we thought maybe would develop sooner. Those are shown in the the red or pink. And then which most of most of the system, existing system serves the need there. There was a portion, a small red line coming down, again, on the right hand side to pick up a few parcels, which that was more of an extension than a capacity need. Next phase being the purple, you can kind of see that red area is sort of filling in. With the purple, there's one project to sort of, again, close that loop on the right hand side around that potential development in the middle time period. And then blue being the furthest time period would trigger an upgrade of the new booster station to either pump additional water from an upgraded DOC facility or potentially pump it to a storage tank further to the west, which would serve that larger blue area. And then there's also, so there's, you can see the existing black line, there's also a parallel blue line. Since the system is longer and more linear, it would also be recommended to two fifty being a major corridor. If you put water lines on both sides and you don't have to do as much work underneath of two fifty, you don't have to extend services. And again, it provides that redundancy, so there would be crossovers every couple thousand feet just to help keep everybody in service during an emergency or a line break of some sort.
Any questions from the board on this on this map or?
You said that last point about putting two water lines on the side of it, why was that not considered when we were actually putting water lines?
Probably just from a cost standpoint.
Phasing standpoint, so. And we're also helping with a standards update. So typically municipalities have a standard where if you put more than fifty people out of service, fifty customers, you would require an additional loop, which is something that will be addressed in the update. At this stage, since it's a very long and linear system, we put in the water line on the one side. And then as development sort of comes through, another standards requirement would be if you're developing a parcel, you have to extend water line beyond the improvement so that the next guy or gal coming in isn't tearing up your driveway and shutting down your business for an extended period of time. So the blue, and again, with the master plan, we're sort of mapping it out, how it actually happens is going to be very different probably. So this is more to show the intent of the county to develop this corridor, provide the redundancy. And then as development occurs, it'll sort of fill in naturally. But to put in, to put in, you know, fully parallel twelve inch lines on both sides of the road now, based on the the current and projected usage in the short term would be a lot of infrastructure. And and it would also cause other issues like water quality issues, which I don't have a negative impact on the system overall.
The it's hard to read the map together, so that the little boxes, the blue box that you have on the on the bottom right. You're in the center there, but I was looking in the right. Yeah.
It's an alternative water treatment plant.
Yeah, right, so that's that's pointing to the dash line to sort of show region where it's somewhere in that general area. If it's just outside of the blue, it's, you know, that's okay. That was just sort of meant to show. Generally, this is sort of the high ground. And it would, it would really reduce the amount of raw water line that you're installing, which there would be a significant cost savings as well. But yeah, essentially, those text file outs have the project number and then in the master plan itself, it provides a more detailed description. So this essentially just shows the project ID and then a very brief title.
And we haven't mapped blown up any, where we can see it.
This.
I'm not talking about here.
Oh, yeah, I did. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 we. Yeah, what we can do is, and and again, this was just meant to be kind of a, but for when we come back with with ordinance stuff, we could have these same maps and we can blow them up on a big eleven by seventeen sheet of paper, so.
So this map is actually twenty four by thirty six inch, so two feet by three feet. And we can, we can, you'll have those, those are in the appendices of the paper copies. And then if it's helpful, we can also put them on foam boards, so they can be displayed. So for sewer, the green here is essentially showing the project that was recently completed. We've got the one million gallon per day pump station there along fifteen, when then that pumps over to DOC.
Yeah, so it collects down here, there's a sewer pump station right on fifteen, right around in front of Max Auto. And then it pumps it all the way back to the Department of Corrections. And that's where our our sewer gets pumped back to to be treated.
Yes, and then there's the the agreement with the with the current allocation for treatment. So on the next slide, kind of shows what those allocations are. So you've got the first tier there, a fairly small amount for DOC, which is enough to kind of get the system started. And then these these flow tiers are essentially what the DOC permit currently entails. So again, there would be some additional logistic negotiation that needs to happen. But from a permit perspective, you nearly have enough capacity for all of the proposed development that we have shown. And what we did in Zion Crossroads as well, when we were looking at the the development throughout the planning period, the density was increased. So initially, it was sort of matching the density that you see in on the Louisa side, about five hundred gallons per day per acre of land. And that slowly increases to a thousand and fifteen hundred, which are on the lower end of what Chesterfield or or Henrico would use for their planning numbers. Again, with the intent, you're going to have initially less dense development. And then as the system grows, things are going to start getting more and more dense.
But just to clarify this, I mean, again, the existing DOC as it stands, we don't have, we have minimal capacity, I mean, we would, we would have to partner with them or or do something on our own up there to get the capacity that's needed. And and really, we've had conversations with with the Department of Corrections before about, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's a shared expansion of their system down the road at some point. And I think they would be, they would be welcome to that suggestion.
I know it hasn't been relevant, but have we had any online conversations with Louisa with regard to?
To their to their sewer?
Sewer plant, well, treatment and sewer. I mean, I think sewer is out of the question right now.
You probably speak better than Louisa.
So they, I think, very early in the process, that question was asked. I think they and Dan worked on that project, so he can probably speak about it as well. But they essentially need all the capacity that they have and and they weren't willing to give.
Before it, when the time comes to increase the water treatment plant, that's a possibility.
For water is part of the danger for water, for me, yes.
And and then am I correct that when you, when you use drain fields that you're not subject to the nutrient credits, is that is that correct or not?
That that is correct, but in Virginia, especially with alternative systems, regulations on disposal. If you were to do a mass drain field, you'd need a massive plan to do that. And it doesn't, it's still a big prospect of. And it plays with.
Gotcha. And, and we've had some meetings with them to, to discuss that. And, and again, I think they're open to it, but I think long term too, again, they're getting their water from the Meachunk. And maybe sometime down the road, maybe they want to be a water customer of our system. So there might be some shared back and forth, you know, we might have some long-term water capacity. They may have some infrastructure that we could utilize for some sewer capacity, but those are just some, some preliminary conversations.
Hate to map that, that growth there for the jail to match up with.
So these, the vertical lines essentially show some of the improvements to increase the capacity. The space between the gray dash. So the gray dash is the total permitted capacity. Or the current design capacity for the station and then the black line for total permitted capacity. So the assumption was that DOC, I don't believe has plans to increase their facility size. So that volume essentially, or that allocation was maintained throughout the planning period. And then the, the red line essentially shows the portion that was assumed to be available for Fluvana. But again, that there are no agreements in place to cover that for the planning period. I will note that on the right hand side. The, the projected flows do exceed the allocation. So since it is at the end of the planning period, it would be recommended to maintain, keep an eye on that, make sure that trends are, are not going in that direction or maybe quite aren't as, or quite as high. Or if this is an accurate representation of, of flow projections, then something potentially like a reuse application could be considered. To make up that difference. All right, next slide please. So this shows sort of the full, the full planned long-term. Again, like in Fuzzy, we showed some darker, some darker gray lines. Those are more or less beyond the planning period, but kind of wanted to capture those in case any of those parcels were to develop within the planning period. And then again, so the red is the near term, purple being midterm, blue being long term. Really the strategy for Zion Crossroads was to capture as much as possible by gravity and then limit the number of regional pumping facilities. Gravity's cheaper and easier to operate and maintain. And it provides the, I would say the most benefit to the county. So everywhere that you see a gravity sewer is essentially the low lying area, looking at contours. This area does, the two fifty is essentially the ridge line in most cases. So everything sort of drains off in opposite directions. So we've, we've located the pumping stations at locations that gather the most flow. And then we're pumping those back up essentially to the gravity system that takes it to the DOC facility. And then we've also on a different map, which isn't included in the presentation, we also delineated the sewer sheds for both CPAs. So if there were to be a development and an improvement is not shown, you could see where it's draining to and, and the public works department could reasonably discern what improvements would be needed to serve that development. So are there any questions from the sewer side? That's good stuff. And then the fun part, the capacity fee and rate analysis. So there's a lot of infrastructure shown and infrastructure is not cheap as we know. Especially during COVID. So we did our best to estimate costs. For all of the projects throughout the planning period. Does have quite a price tag. We did allocate. So again, back to the standards update. One of the policies there that's proposed would be an off sizing or an oversizing credit or off-site credit for developers who are building larger lines than they may need for their development. So we tried to account for the minimum developer cost in these numbers. And then what above that, what the county's portion conceivably would be. We did put several disclaimers that state essentially this is a planning document. It is not a guarantee on the county's behalf that they will do this amount of money or, or whatever and things, and things do change. But in order to assess the, the current rates and provide recommendations for new rates. We, these were the numbers that we used as a starting point. And again, these are all summarized in the master plan. We also incorporated the cost estimates from the asset management plan when we did the condition assessment. And really that's more to keep the existing facilities active until the James River water supply is online and available.
And, and just one thing on like Morris and Oma Hundred, do these reflect what was done already or is this after what was completed?
These were additional.
Okay.
And so it was a lot more expensive before, but these take out what's already been done. And, and again, you know, we have photos in the report and the summary of each specific deficiency. And, and they are ranked in, in priority in the report.
Is, is the comparison chart with the proposed increase there to match the increased costs? Is that what you're doing there?
Yes, so.
But that's just for the, the cost of repairs, not of infrastructure.
So this addresses both infrastructure and repairs. So the availability fee is what would go gener- generally speaking. The intent is availability fees go towards your infrastructure costs and then your rates go towards operation maintenance. So it's not always that clean. Especially for smaller systems, you sort of need to be able to, to move those funds back and forth because if you were to have your rates, what they need to be for maintenance, then one would be off kilter and more expensive than the other. So this initial strategy is looking at the whole system overall and trying to balance those costs.
And what is an EMU?
EMU is equivalent metering unit. Which essentially it's, you assume, so an EMU in this case would, it would also be like saying an equivalent per household usage. So you may have if you have a moving gallons per day, then you could divide that by the number of the, the EMUs, which is two hundred and fifty gallons per minute in this case or gallons per day. And then you would get, you know, the equivalent number of homes that are representative of that development. Sort of a means of comparing.
Like, would it be a comparison like, say, like a single family homes, like one EMU, whereas like a, a bigger commercial development, maybe four EMUs or something?
Something like that, yeah. Just so that you're really the EMUs come back to. And there, there are also different availability, availability fees for meter size. So larger meters pay more in availability fees because they have a larger EMU equivalency than the smaller. Which we've got, I mean, I, there's additional data to this that I can share as well, but that's, that's, that's in a nutshell.
Yeah, this is like this, this right here is kind of the base minimum for a connection, like a connection, connection for your availability fee. But if someone comes in and they need a four inch line coming in or a five inch line coming into the building, that could potentially be
Significantly.
A hundred thousand dollars or something like that for a connection because that means they need large capacity water.
I think my next question was in relationship to what is normal around the areas, twenty-five thousand dollars for water and sewer connection per household within the range or is it high or low or be for the area?
So these numbers, we did do a comparison and I can provide that as well. We compared to Almorel County, Louisa County and Goochland County. The rates are slightly higher, but I know, I think everyone currently is looking to raise their rates. The availability fees are about in line. I would say they're comparative to the one inch meter, which would be a, the smaller commercial. Which was the baseline that we used for this analysis. So the current rate structure, that's I believe what's currently being charged. And then we included a two percent increase on the water side. And then the sewer base charge was eleven dollars before, which is very low. Usually sewer rates are higher than water rates. Because it's more expensive to treat the sewer. So we did propose an increase there to thirty-five dollars, which is in line with, with Louisa County. And then the rate, again, the rates are a little bit higher than neighboring counties, but again, we're consistent with.
And, and what this is doing, this is, this is basically taking all of our rates. It's kind of creating one standard throughout the county. So again, these rates down here, the twenty-one and the, and the eleven, that's based upon the fourth unit sanitary district rates as they are right now. Now, a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, we were going to increase the rates in, in the fourth unit sanitary district, but with COVID coming on, we just, we kind of backed off of that. So now that we're kind of getting this new system implemented, we're trying to have it so it's a similar rate, well, it's not a similar rate, a same rate for everyone in all water systems in Fluvana County. Whether it's water or sewer to kind of create some consistency and some likeness across all of our systems. And that's what was utilized to kind of create the whole master rate structure and everything.
Correct. So next slide please.
And, and let me just say one thing before we move forward. So, so again, these, these numbers here, grand totals, when you look at county CIP costs are, are very large. You know, the one thing to kind of keep in mind, this is looking at maximum build out of all the systems, whether it's water, sewer. The good thing is this doesn't take into account that we've got a significant amount of money that was proffered to the county to upgrade some of the water systems in what's considered the Fuzzy Palmyra area. So, so that'll be a big offset to some of that as well.
So that's a, that's, I mean, that is almost like a two hundred and forty million dollars is what you're anticipating over the next thirty years.
Essentially, yeah.
But that cost in essence is being paid by your availability fees is the way you've got that counted.
Uh, some of it. So there's, there is a, we do account for on the next couple of slides. What we've called a county subsidy that, so that could be things that are proffered. We've also been talking when, we're also looking at the ordinances currently as well. So we've been talking to planning about the proffer process. And if some additional, so in addition to the oversizing credit policy and the utility standards. If additional proffers could be made for specific developments to help sort of offset that cost so that anything proffered to the county would fall under that, that county subsidy umbrella. It could also potentially include grants or federal funding. Like some of the relief packages that are being shared now. So that sort of, it's an aggregate term for sent monies coming from the county, but where those money come from isn't specified.
Offhand, what's a window for those relief programs that are being, the infrastructure plans?
I mean, I think they're coming down currently.
Yeah. I mean, like for instance, we, we submitted for, for the Zion's Crossroads West extension. And, and if I remember correctly, I mean, a, a lot of the, the ARPA funds are kind of going through, committed through twenty twenty-four, but, but again, you have to spend it by twenty twenty-six. And so that's going to be, that's going to be an ever, every year grant process. So we've submitted some funding, we submitted a funding request for the, for the extension line to try and get the, the, the gap of, of what the cost is now versus completing it to get that covered. But again, some of these other projects too, like for instance, for, we've also from the JRWA, we also submitted an application on that side too, for that species, you know, mainly because Louisa doesn't have the benefit on their side of the line too.
Do you reference the, the ARPA fund, but aren't these part of really the infrastructure plan?
Well, it is. There, there, I mean, there's a couple of things. You, you got the bipartisan infrastructure funding, which is funding that's been provided through like BDH and a lot of the state agencies. And then, you know, localities have their ARPA funds that they certainly can use for different types of.
We're looking at both of those.
Yes.
I know that the infrastructure plans were heavily bent towards the well side.
Yep.
For Brian.
Yep. So yeah, so I mean, again, we submitted one application. Next year, as we start going through this and we start looking at some of these different components. We're going to probably just continually submit applications for these different projects. Yeah, that's a lot.
Yes, it's a lot. And again, we can provide this on a larger sheet as well in the report. But for water revenue projections, essentially the county subsidy was calculated to maintain those rates that were identified. We did do a separate analysis to see if we increased the water availability fee and completely eliminated the county subsidy, what that would look like. And those numbers are pretty astronomical and, and would say not feasible, would be much, much higher than, than the neighboring municipalities have. So we did account for county subsidy. And which was through the year about twenty of the plan. We did extend it out to thirty-five, but really that was just to see the amateurization of the loan sort of end. You would have, the system would continue to grow. Potentially, but since we were starting to reach some of those capacity limitations, we sort of held off from adding. The more you add and if, as long as the capacity is available, that would help distribute the cost as well. So the, the customer based revenue is really what you're getting from the customers and that can be reinvested in the system as well. And then on the far right side, that shows the net revenue and which is totalized at the end of that spreadsheet. And this same approach was done for both water and sewer.
And, and just as, just as remember, as Richard said before, this county subsidy, I mean, that's, that's not necessarily Fluvana County putting in two point seven million dollars every year to subsidize us. I think if I remember correctly, I totaled these up. I think it equals fifty-one million. And so we're getting forty-seven some million from Dominion to upgrade our, well, our water, our water systems. Plus this could be, you know, we're, we, the county is getting a million dollars from DEQ towards, I mean, so, so the, you know, if, if we get more outside funding, that just kind of applies towards that, what's called a subsidy piece.
Right. And that's assuming these projections happen in the next twenty years. If it gets extended to forty, then that obviously reduces. If it happens quicker, then I think we don't be surprised, but again, anytime you're doing master planning, it's recommended to revisit the plan on a regular basis. Just to keep your, you know, your pulse on the development, make sure you're tracking and looking at trends. And then you can update the projections and have more accurate predictions moving forward.
Like I said, I know this is a lot. It is. This is in the report too.
It is, yes. And so again, similar, less subsidy on this one, which is good.
What's that? What did that add up to?
Um, honestly, I, uh, what's that? It's twenty-five. Yeah, about, I call it thirty, thirty-five million.
More than that, no?
Uh, maybe.
Yeah, I think it's about.
When you got ten.
Forty-five million or something.
And then you got, it's twenty-five.
Seven. That's seventeen plus twenty-five. I'm at forty-two and I am.
Well, the first six columns adds up to, or five columns is twenty-five. Twenty-five million.
No, twenty-seven.
Right. I was just rounding up. Rounding down.
Twenty-seven, seventeen, but, but like that's forty-five million. That's forty-five million at least. We're close to it.
So, and you know, and I would say it's in scale with the amount of infrastructure that's included in the plan. But again, it's all going to depend on the pace of development moving forward. The pace of development moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, if those properties that, that were identified don't. You know, obviously, we're not just moving full steam ahead and then, and building everything if we don't see it. You know, as we go on, we're, we're, we're expanding and in what we see and if things look like they're. Some of those properties that were anticipated are scaling back or are not moving or there's no growth. You know, once we get the line in and we start seeing some things moving forward, that'll kind of flavor. How we move forward with, with looking at whether it's an expansion or things like that. But the one thing that we absolutely do know is, you know, we have some, we have some water components in place for both Zion's and Fork Union. But the sewer is the thing that we need to really, really.
Unless you figure out answer to sewer, no need to build all the water.
Well, that's, yes, and and so.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
What goes in got to come out.
Yes.
These are projections in terms of growth. When, when we were looking, this was back eight years ago. Just the, the XR program, the, the DC, the DOC program. They sort of did a spreadsheet that calculated a low growth scenario. Medium growth scenario and a high growth scenario. Well, how would you classify the growth scenario that you sort of anticipated here?
So this, I would say is a hybrid approach. So we had talked about that earlier, we did do low, medium and high. But in reality, you know, it's going to ramp up over time. So we started on the first time period, it was a lower, the lower five hundred gallons. Per day per acre, which is similar to what the Louisa County side has seen thus far. Which that's been going on for at least twenty years, but that's, that's sort of the initial phase. And then sort of the second phase was about double that, a thousand gallons. Per acre up to, and then the last phase. Fifteen hundred, which if you look at. Chesterfield standards, for example, they've got. And then again, I don't know that I mentioned this, this was assumed to be mostly commercial in nature. So if you look at some of the other standards, you may see numbers as high as like thirty five hundred gallons. Per day per acre for a, an industrial application. So. We tried to kind of keep it in scale with the culture of Fluvana and neighboring areas than what they might see. So we did use the five, one thousand and fifteen hundred sort of ramping up over time.
Any other question? No, it's a lot.
Yes.
I never thought of talk this much about sewer. Two weeks.
Is the net total on this, the, the net total profit? That are just, yeah, I mean, on the, on the far right.
Yeah, that's the, the, at the summation of the revenue column there on the right, the last green column. And then the, there's the cumulative total that you can track it.
You know, and really, you know, it, it's, I remember. It's been said before, you know, you're not. Off of water and sewer alone, isn't necessarily the thing that, that brings the revenue to the county. It's, it's the business that's, that, that comes, it's the, the real estate that they have. It's the person, business, personal property that they bring and it's the jobs that, that also come that. That's more of the revenue driver more than just the actual, you know, getting money for the, for the utility itself. I mean, you certainly wanted to support the system, but, but the bigger pieces is kind of down the road.
What, and on their customer based revenue? How is it that that number drops? I, I just haven't examined the math there, so maybe you can just.
Yeah, so that's, you're not adding new customers to the system after that point. So that's, that's why that.
So that's really the connection fees that are disappearing there.
Right, because you're still paying off your loans that are this, you know, they continue from before. But you're not getting that new revenue in with connection fees. But in reality, that'll continue to grow. And. Typically, we would have stopped at the twenty year mark, but then you wouldn't see the full amateurization of the loan.
Connection fee is a one time fee.
Correct. Right, so that's paid at the time of connection and then you pay. The rates are based on, there's a minimum charge and then you pay a per thousand gallon usage above. There's a, a volume associated with that base charge. So in this structure, it's two thousand gallons. So for thirty five dollars, you get two thousand gallons, if you only use a thousand, you still pay thirty five dollars. And then above that, for each thousand gallons, you pay an additional seventeen dollars and sixty five cents.
So if this was a residence, it would, the cost would be baked into the cost of the house.
If, so when you would, typically, when you, the developer, if they were building a house. It would be part of, of that closing cost. And if the house is already connected and they buy the house and there would be no additional, maybe a small fee to transfer the account into their name. But they wouldn't have to repay that connection fee.
Somebody lost their well and had to connect.
Well, then, then they would have to come out of pocket for that, yeah.
A new connection.
Yes, if they're doing water and sewer. Yes, and, and, and so some of, and, and part of some of the ordinances too, you know, there wasn't a push. Some of the discussion was there wasn't a big push necessarily to, to push residential people to say you have to connect. It was more for a new commercial that was coming on. You know, if, if, like, say, for instance, if someone's well went bad or something like that. And they could drill a new well and they could get, get the needed water, well, then they would need, then, then they wouldn't need to hook up to the water system.
To that point, they probably wouldn't need sewer, because they already got the drain.
Correct, yeah.
If you look at a, I think, was it connecting for the.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
I mean, ten thousand for guaranteed water or ten thousand for a well. Right, it's pretty easy to make that calculation there.
Right.
Yeah, the only difference is now you're paying, you're paying a monthly water, water bill, that's, that's the difference. And, and you don't have to worry about maintaining, maintaining a, yeah, well or system.
Generally, you would have water when the power is out, where that may not be the case.
For perspective purposes, what? When we look at eighteen hundred EMUs, like, for example, what, if you know the answer, is Louisa in the Zion's Crossroads area? What's their EMU at present roughly?
Good question, I would say, I think currently they're around. Half a million gallons per day, roughly. And EMUs two hundred fifty gallons, so it's a ten thousand EMUs.
Ten thousand EMUs.
Did I do that math right? Someone? My phone's still on, I can check it real fast.
Three, four times. You said five hundred thousand?
Yeah, I think that's the current. That's the current.
Yeah, I think my half millions are currents, they're current.
Oh, no, that's two thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so your twenty year plan is essentially saying this is what. This would look like if, not to say that we're matching Louisa exactly, but, because this is countywide, but for perspective purposes, that's.
So the Zion Crossroads projection is about four million gallons per day on the water side, which. Was, would be average day, so yeah, that, that would be about eight times the Louisa system.
This is including update, I mean, our four million gallons here is what you're saying. But I guess what's confusing to me is that our total EMUs only add up to eighteen hundred EMUs.
Um, for. Right, hmm, okay.
You talk about in this column here, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the, I guess, the two thousand.
Oh, I see, there we go.
Right.
Yeah, the two thousand number, I think it's about two fifty is the, is the EMU. So, and the, the four million is a rough number, so it's not quite four million.
I guess I'm still a little confused, so. If Louisa's using six hundred thousand gallons, they're at roughly two thousand EMUs right now. And you're projecting this for potentially four million gallons.
Right.
You would assume that you could get a lot more.
And I don't know exactly what their EMUs are, then that's a rough estimate.
And I, and I, so I know, but I'm just saying that even, even if.
Yeah, I see.
It seems to be way off, like, I mean.
Yeah.
Like, you would think you could get a whole lot more EMUs on this. And I, and I'm sure you probably didn't create this, so I'm not trying to put you on.
No, it's, I mean, this is based on the flow projections, so. I can go back and pull the map and get you a better explanation.
Sure, that'd be great, I'm just curious in terms of if this is, you're spending a hundred million dollars to have two thousand EMUs. You know, that seems really pricey if you look at it from that perspective.
The, and in the report, there is a table that shows total EMUs per period. I just don't have it in this presentation.
Alrighty. I think, any other questions, because we've got to go to closed session.
I just want to say it's a really impressive report, I know there's a lot of hard work that went into it, thank you. Your presentation was very clear and. It's, it's excellent, it's excellent work in my opinion.
Thank you, yeah, and remember, so a lot of this will also, as, as we come forward, you know, some of the next. Pieces that we have to do, we have to get the ordinances in place. Let's just say we had a system that was a hundred percent ready to go right now at Zion's Crossroads. Well, we don't have the ordinances in place that allow and give the specifications and talk about. What businesses need to do to hook up and, and, and trust me, we're getting calls. Multiple calls quite, quite a bit on that system right now, so. This will lead in kind of to a next piece of, of, of some of the ordinances that'll be coming forward to the board for their consideration. So once we kind of get everything a little more finalized, we can, we can start connecting.
Thank you very much for coming out, we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a safe trip home.
And they're, they're going to be in for what, first piece of a closed session.
Eric, are all those calls you're getting, that you're getting about that water line, are they all business?
Yes, yes, we, we get, yes, you, Jennifer, Bobby, myself, Douglas. They're, they're all, and, and there's some that are, that are one, already up there that, that are existing businesses that are on wells. That want to hook up to the public water, water line, and then there's new ones too that are, you'll hear about and things that are. Coming down the line that, that they, they want to hook up now. Uh, again, there was a, a building hundred thousand or twen-.
A hundred thousand square foot building.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, again, they're wanting to hook up, so I mean. We want to. What do we tell them? We tell them that we are trying to get our, our water line complete. And we have some, some issues and delays and we are working on finishing our ordinances. And as soon as we get those in place, we are, we will be more than willing to give you a call and, and keep you updated.
All right, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I'm with the Flannan County Board of Supervisors, enter and disclose me pursuant to the provisions of section two dot two, thirty seven, eleven, eight, three. And section two dot two, thirty seven, eleven, eight, five, of the code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for purposes of discussing. Real estate, Fork Union, real estate acquisition. Perspective industry, perspective.
Motion is made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Miss Booker Hall, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye.
Session be resolved before supervisors as here by say by the best of each man's knowledge. One only fellow business matters lawfully exempted from opening. That you got three seven eleven air the code original nineteen fifty. And two on set public business matters right in time in motion but it's covered in this word. Were discussed or considered in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say.
Florida section two dot two dash. Thirty seven.
Five, I think. I think it would be appropriate for the motion to note that the second item for consideration was not discussed.
We'll we'll be going back into closed session later. All right, we've got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Miss Booker, Miss Eager, Miss Booker, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Fairchild. Chair votes I, we are now out of closed session. Uh, hold it down. Alrighty. Uh. We will now convene for our regular meeting of the Flavanna County Board of Supervisors, I call it the order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, the living and the just.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the delay. Um, in case you didn't catch, we only got one portion of our closed session done, so we'll have to go back in for closed session. Um. Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda, Mr. Doll, I know you're gonna have something to say.
I do, Mr. Chair, I actually have, I have a few things as just some things that we need, just need some head nods on from the board. Um, so one is 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 a quick discussion of the performing, I'm sorry, the Arts Council MOU. Um, one item is a discussion on ZTA twenty one oh three, if you remember a year ago, the board deferred and you've got a staff report on that. If you remember a year ago, the board deferred. Um, the 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 ZTA which would, um, I'm sorry, it's the rezoning, um, increasing the density of the R four of the R four zoning. And the board said, we didn't want to take action at the time, and so the board deferred it, and by that deferral, we have to take action within a year. I think by the first July meeting, I believe, we're coming up on a year. And so we just need some just just some discussion from the board on how to, no action, but how to move forward with that. Um, one, I also gave you the BOS retreat proposal, which is right behind the other item there. And then a fourth item is the economic development strategic goals, just kind of because we're not doing the retreat. Well, because the retreat date that we have is not as early as we had hoped. We were going to talk about some of the economic development strategic goals during the retreats. I just wanted to see how the board wants us to move forward with 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 the economic development strategic plan. So I'm sorry, those are my four things.
All right, anybody have thoughts about the universities again?
Do I was trying to pack one. I said that now.
Yeah. We need to adopt these into the agenda or we actually.
Yeah, you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about put those under unfinished business.
Oh, you're talking about.
For those, for those four items, I'm talking unfinished business. To cover all four tonight, yes.
Yeah, and I would like to, um, ask the board to put the, um, alliance, um. Working with our seniors, I'd like us to put it up sooner than August, I'd like us to put it in for action in our next meeting in July.
Alliance working with seniors.
Yeah, remember we've moved the the one that Marty gave us. At our first meeting.
You're talking about the AARP.
Oh, last meeting.
And we we said we need to think about the resolution, there was also an application for the AARP. And I don't think we need to, I'm going to, would like to speak to that about putting it in action before August. And it will be in the board package, and we need to look at it, read it again. And because I think it seems to have been maybe some misunderstanding of what we're supposed to, what was asked about. I want to talk about that bit.
Okay. I move with the changes that have been made. Just that we adopt the agenda with the changes that have been in question.
Uh. It's just, it's a lot of stuff to add.
I was thinking the same, we still have to go into closed session again. I'm not saying I don't mind, but I'm just saying.
Well, we didn't think that was gonna take a lot of time last time, and it wound up taking thirty minutes, ma'am, I'm not being argumentative. Oh, well, I mean, because they'll.
Some of the, if if Mr. Chair, if I may, some of these, I I dare hate to say it, some of these should be very quick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Doll, but that just doesn't work that way. Um, and I still got two more days.
Let's do it, I'm I'm up for it.
All right, well, enough people have said yes, although.
There's a second.
No, it's there in a second, just need three head nods. Now, uh.
Not to adopt.
Oh, oh, to adopt the agenda. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Miss Booker, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair vote aye. Mr. Doll.
I'll save you sometime, I don't have a county minister, a county administrator's report this evening.
Say, nevermind, I'm, be quiet. Alrighty, hearing that we have no county administrators' report, we will now open our first round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board, step to the microphone, please state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is anyone wishing to speak at this time? Now. I know that we have. One applicant for a position here tonight that was looking to speak, or we're gonna, on the board commission and committee appointments.
I would, I would maybe suggest if we have, I would maybe suggest until we have appointments, maybe having them come up and speak then.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, that's why I'm asking, would do we want them, because we usually don't have that, but if they're here. All right.
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman, may I answer that? Um, when we've had the planning permission decision open before, we have had the candidates, all the candidates were invited, they always invite.
Yes, yeah.
To speak, remember once we had, we had two people to come up. And but it is open, that's why I want to make the point, and it is open.
Right, to everyone.
Who's on that list that can come and speak.
Yes, so we will wait, and if you're here for that, just wait until we get to E. Uh, is there anyone wish to speak to the board, speak in public comment at this time? Seeing no one rising up, Ms. Harris and Mr. Doll, do we have any hands raised?
I'd like to raise my hand from Zoom.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Pat Robinett, and I just wanted to attend the meeting tonight to ask you about the increase in the personal property tax. And how that's impacting all of us people who are having to pay more for everything these days. Um, I understand that you lowered the rate, but you didn't lower it enough to not have an increase by two hundred and fifty dollars for the year for myself and my family. And I understand that you are directing people to go to the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and they ask them about it, and they're just being bombarded. And they also said that they have nothing to do about, there's nothing they can do. So I just was wondering if, is there any chance that this could change, or is this it, is this written in stone for the rest of the year?
Ma'am, I will tell you, we don't usually respond back to public comment, but you're welcome to go to my two cents and send something in, and somebody will get back to you on that one.
All right, thank you.
But ma'am, well, can also say, whatever district you're in, um, maybe you can reach out to your board member from that district.
Uh, yeah, I was going to, I just, I just found out yesterday, I just spoke to them yesterday and saw that there was a meeting, so I figured I could address everybody at the same time. But I will.
I I will tell you, I spent about an hour down in their office one day, and they have directed people to give me a call. I love to talk, if you ever want to call.
Will do, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am, is there anyone else raising their hand? All right, seeing none, I will now close second, the first round of public comment, I'm struggling today. All right, first up is public hearing, A V dot secondary six-year plan, Scott Thornton.
Uh, good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and, uh, Mr. Doll, uh, do apologize for not being in person, I'm a little under the weather, still recovering. So appreciate the being able to accommodate me via Zoom. Um, in your packet this evening, you've got the draft secondary six-year plan, as we discussed in the work session, which basically shows your out-year funds being placed into the district grant future unpaved. And the countywide traffic services, um, this is unchanged from the work session, and I present to you for consideration and public hearing. And hopefully a resolution to approve the plan as presented.
Are there any questions, comments from the board? About the plan? Alrighty, thank you very much. And I'm glad you're feeling a little bit better, I hope to feel a whole lot better. Alrighty. Yeah. Uh, no comments or questions from the board? All right, hearing none, I will now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board, is there anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Harris, do we see any hands? Okay, hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I move to accept the resolution for the V dot secondary six-year plan twenty twenty two through twenty two, uh, twenty twenty two point twenty-three through twenty twenty seven, twenty-eight. And V dot construction priority list twenty-two, twenty-three, as required by sections three, thirty-three dot one dash twenty-three and thirty-three dash dot one dash twenty-three point four of the nineteen fifty code of Virginia.
I'm rubbing off on Mr. I'm rubbing off on Mr. O'Brien, do we have a second? Motion's been made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Miss Eager, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, chair votes aye, thank you very much, now, Mr. Thornton, I will say this, we have had some. Calls and concerns about, and and this is, I I'm not trying to come at you off the cuff, but we've, uh, the, and Mr. Doll's reached out to you about it with the paving on Route fifteen. Could you talk, could you talk to that for a second?
Uh, yes, sir, so it is a surface treatment more than a paving, it's a latex modified seal that is being placed on top of the existing asphalt on Route fifteen. Um, the intent of the placement is to, um, improve the, improve and extend the service life of the existing, uh, of the underlying asphalt on fifteen.
Alrighty, anyone else have anything? Thank you very much, Mr. Thornton, uh, like I said, I hope you feel better.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, B. ZMP twenty-two oh one, Flavanna County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Miles.
Yes, uh, good evening, Chairman Sheridan, members of the board, I'm gonna go through the first portion of the request and then turn it over to Mr. Doll in the back portion as the applicant. We're kind of doing this together like at the commission, so. Um, so this is, um, ZMP twenty-two oh one, Flavanna County Board of Supervisors requesting to rezone from A one, um, agricultural general to the I one industrial limited zoning district. Um, of the thirty-three point eight plus or minus acres of the tax maps of fifty-one, section A, parcels one thirty, one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine. Um, these subject properties are generally located behind fifty-seven, twenty-five James Madison Highway, which is Route fifteen. And they are located in the Fork Union Community Planning Area and in the Fork Union election election district. So most of you are familiar where that is at the community center and behind the, um, fire station in that vicinity on Route fifteen. So, um, looking at this, uh, our our own application of rezoning, um, the twenty fifteen comp plan, what we do, um, as far as compliance, um, and looking at. Um, we we looked at the economic development chapter and Fork Union, um, planning areas to have balanced land uses and transportation improvements. Um, by concentrating these industrial development type uses off of primary transportation corridors, um, such as US Route fifteen. Um, by being able to significantly enhance Flavanna County's tax base. And then finally, as you all saw in the work session tonight, the Flavanna County has planned public water and sewer improvements along Route fifteen, or, um, provide the necessary infrastructure for us to, um, go about that through economic development purposes. In the request, I worked with Mr. Doll and Mr. Payne, and then you all, um, provided your input, um, at one of the recent board meetings prior to this going to the planning commission. Um, with, uh, Flavanna County, um, proffering out self-storage facilities, car washes, which are high wa- high water usage right now. And then solid waste collection facilities, and that's the buy right, and then in the I one, uh, special use permit. Um, we don't see the use for commercial amusements, manufacturer home sales in that area, shooting ranges outdoor, and then the higher version of, um, of solid waste material recovery facilities. So all of those uses are out. Um, relative to, um, the traffic study that was conducted in conjunction with, um, V dot and EPR. Fork Union Commerce Park, um, being on Route fifteen, um, is classified as a minor arterial road by V dot. Um, the TIS that was completed with EPR calls for left and right turn lanes around Route fifteen. And the language from that EPR report, um, is a northbound left turn lane with two hundred feet of storage, um, as well with a two hundred foot taper. And a southbound right turn lane with two hundred feet of storage, and also with a two hundred foot taper. So in the extension of the right turn lane into the proposed subject property, and the next slide and final slide from my portion, um, basically points out, um, as you're, um, on Route fifteen, looking into the property. The community center, um, and the fire station kind of flanking the entrance, uh, you'll see that the improvements for Route fifteen. Um, and this is for, um, well into the future for, um, the amount of truck traffic and deliveries that we hope to, um, have as new, um, with new uses, um, once the parcels are sold. Um, this, this will adequately, if not much greatly, um, enhance this portion of the corridor for us to get, um. Uh, shipping and receiving and other office warehouse uses, um, and facilities in and out for construction and for operations. uh, shipping and receiving and other office warehouse uses um, and facilities in and out for construction and for operations. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Doll.
And I'll be, I'll try and be really quick on this, but I'll try and be mindful that maybe some public, some of the public hasn't heard this before as well. Um, we've been talking about the uh, again, the county's own, uh, the county-owned land, which is uh, behind the Fork Union Community Center. So the county um, had authorized staff to move forward with rezoning um, these three parcels here along the edge um, to the, to the other, a- as the other parcel is already zoned I one, um, to, to rezone those three parcels from A one to I one. Um, so it's parcel one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, and then one thirty, those are the parcels that, that are being uh, considered for the rezoning.
Those are the additional ones that we've added.
Yes, with the county has purchased these additional parcels, these three parcels within the last couple of years. We, we already own parcel one twenty-nine, and then parcel one twenty-nine A. Um, so again, the county purchased on one thirty, uh, fifty-one A, one thirty in twenty nineteen, and then fifty-one A, one thirty-eight, and fifty-one A, one thirty-nine in twenty twenty-one. Since that time, uh, the board authorized staff to move forward with site development work, which included preliminary geotech, uh, boundary and topography, phase one environmental site assessment, waters of the US delineation, cultural resources, threatened endangered species, master plan, preliminary engineering, and the traffic impact analysis. And these are just kind of typical, uh, typical things that would be um, done for developing of a commercial property.
Alrighty, are there any questions?
I'm sorry.
You slowed down, I thought.
I'm sorry, I just took a quick breath, um. Um, so again, this just shows uh, the uh, the purples already zoned I one, the blues zoned A one. And then this just kind of shows the topography of, of the existing parcels, um, and you'll see in the upcoming maps that, that for the master plan report that we are gonna, it's, 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 it's kind of laid out utilizing some of the existing contours of the property, so we're not dealing with large um, large kind of swales and stuff like that. So again, looking at uh, what's being proposed, um, as, as Mr. Miles stated, here's Route fifteen, here's the community center, here's Fork Union, here's the proposed road going into the um, into the uh, Commerce Park, and there's um, being proposed um, five pads, all five of these pads combined, um, total one hundred and thirty-three acres. Um, and, and so a couple of things, this can be done in a phased approach, but I'm just gonna kind of go through and kind of show everything once it's fully done. With these five pads, the, the developable um, total uh, building area is, if I remember correctly, is right around five or five hundred and fifty thousand square feet, um, once all these pads would be developed. Now certainly, it doesn't mean that this is the way it's necessarily gonna look. Um, you know, someone on one of these pads may want one large building instead of two large buildings, but this just kind of gives those that are interested in the board just kind of a general layout, but, but the pads themselves are pretty much, um, the land underneath them is pretty much kind of set because they've determined what is the best way to excavate the land and, 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 you know, use the excess and put it in, in some of the swales as well. Um, so again, this is the concept plan of what the uh, what, what the Commerce Park would look like. And again, uh, things for the county to do, um, and actually, this slide's old, I should have updated this one, you'll see that in a later one, but one, we're talking about rezoning later on in the meeting, um, there is uh, an item for official name of the park, and then certainly, we're already ongoing discussing this with uh, marketing and discussing with developer, uh, with developers, and then there would be some long-range plans, you know, design and engineering of the park and determining sewer solutions down there as well. Um, so again, that's all I really have to report to the board, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions? Waited this time. Alrighty, hearing no questions from the board, I will now open the uh, public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wish to speak at this time? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I knew that Board of Supervisors approved ZMP twenty-two oh one, a request to amend Flavanna County zoning map to conditionally rezone from A one Agricultural General to the I one Industrial Limited Zoning District with respect to approximately thirty-three point eight plus or minus acres of tax map fifty-one, section A possible one thirty, one thirty-eight, and one thirty-nine, with progress date April the seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Motion's been made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Ziegler, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Next up, reaction matters. C, naming of the county-owned business park in Fork Union, Ms. Schmeck. And, or is Mr. Doll, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Doll has something to do with this one. Come on, Ms. Schmeck.
Again, as we talked about, you know, some of the next steps was, you know, we'd like to really have an official name for, for the park, and, and I don't think it needs to be too complicated. I mean, we've been calling it a, a few things as it is. So Ms. Schmeck, what do you, uh, you know, again, as the county moves forward, you know, we want to re, we went through the rezoning, the board just approved the rezoning. Some of the next steps are, you know, naming the park and, and kind of pushing it out there more, and, and having an official presence and an official name for it, um, as we try and market it and, and, you know, put the property out there for interested businesses. And as we talked about, those five parcels are, are kind of what encompass the business park. Um, and just as the previous slide, so thanks for the county complete, the board just approved the rezoning uh, just before this, the official name for the park, um, you know, marketing the park, which Ms. Schmeck is already doing, she's got uh, VDP and uh, developers looking at it, and we'll certainly be talking more about that. Um, and then some long-range things would be considered, you know, signage, you know, maybe a temporary sign, future home of whatever blank business park, Fork Union Blank Park. Um, determining at a later point, not tonight, you know, does the, does, does the county want to get some plans in place, a design for road and utility, so if a, if a developer comes in and says, we want pad blank, well, the road infrastructure is already there, we don't have to do that, it's just something to think about. Or the, if the board wanted to, they could design and engineer the entire park and pads. I think that's probably more than we need, certain, certainly way more than we need to do. And then also determining a sewer solution for the park, and we've had some conversations about water and sewer this evening as well. And then, you know, certainly long-range plans, you know, the big goal is businesses acquiring parcels in the park. Um, so we've done those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but, so these are just some of the really standard kind of clear, in-your-face names that we came up with for, um, for the park. And I, I don't think they're a big shock or a big surprise, um, what it's called, and, and certainly, we'd certainly be interested in taking other suggestions. We've talked a little bit about it, and we are, we are fifty-fifty partial to one and two. Um, either way, and you know, some things you have to consider about is, you know, acronyms and things like that, but I think we're, I think we're okay.
You know what, I, I said, now, what's the difference between a commerce park and a business park?
I'm gonna let Ms. Schmeck answer that one.
So I did, I did no research, I'm gonna say some of commerce buying and selling. Uh, businesses where you have marketing, it's much more the same thing. Um, industrial parks, you know, where you have industry in. And then I thought, which of those names have been, had the most success? Because I have heard of industrial parks not being successful. And then, and I'm sure there's some that are successful. So, um, which one would make sense to people who say, you have a, a commercial park in your county? What do y'all do there? You know, but you said business park, I think people understand this. They know that there's some businesses going to be there, there may be some jobs. Uh, and except the commercial, could be jobs too, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't come across as a place where you have jobs. So I, so Tony, I don't know, but I have thought about it. So I'm not, because they haven't named anything, it would be the Booker Park.
I, I was just gonna say the Moselle Park.
Yeah, it would be the most popular park.
I mean, we don't have to worry about acronyms and.
On the um, community center, and I'd be on park.
Yeah. I make a motion.
So I'm going to, I'm, I think, um, I think business park, but anything, you know, I'll come up with it, I'm sorry.
I have one question, and, and I don't know if this would make it too long, would put Route fifteen in there somewhere. There's a lot of people may not know where Fork Union is, they know Route fifteen.
I've been overseas, and if I say Fork Union, it's, we have a military academy, oh yeah.
You know, the, the nice thing with putting Fork Union, it, it gives it kind of.
I'm saying, put Fork Union.
Oh, somewhere.
Like Fork Union Route fifteen Business Park. It's gotta roll off. Yeah, that doesn't roll off, yeah. I'm, I'm with, I'm with the business, put the business in there.
The Business Park rolls off a little, a little easier, but the Commerce Park too has some benefit, and you know, I know Jennifer could talk about some of the differences.
So, uh, speaking on a previous locality, the Economic Development Authority had several different of these parks, actually one of each of these. And the industrial park is just a little, just, just as you said, it's an industrial park, it's a little rough around the edges, but they do have design criteria. Business Park, um, Spring Hill is one that's up here that you can visualize and think of. Um, a Commerce Park, same thing, Business Park and Commerce Park are very similar, similar. Um, they have a Northgate Commerce Park in, in Suffolk, it, which is where the new Amazon is going. So um, it's, it's got Amazon and Juan cheese, which is a fish company, um, but they're very um, a little bit more hip and, you know, the, the buildings are a little bit clean and, and sleek, and uh, whereas the Business Park, as you see, they're kind of a little of everything. So yes, offices and medical and those types of things. So I think it can kind of go either way, and like I said, we were kind of fifty-fifty on it.
I feel like Commerce is a more modern name, and um, it just feels a little bit.
Business and commercial.
There you go.
Business and commercial center.
Yeah, I like that, I like that even better, yeah.
You, you just can't market it, something that's that big and wordy. You just shoot.
Fork Union, Mr. Fairchild.
Route fifteen Business and Commerce Park, it's just, um, I'm, I'm fine with either one, I don't, I don't care.
Well, then there's Fork Union Commercial Park, I guess. We don't have this in there. What does that apply?
I have never heard of a commercial park.
I haven't either.
But that doesn't mean there's not one out there.
That does have carry implications, it's private, I feel like, to me.
We don't want that.
That carries a connotation to me, if you go on a commercial park, it somehow means that it's a purely private organization. You know, you may disagree.
Curious as to why.
We're making this up as we go.
Totally.
I'm good with Fork Union Commerce Park or Fork Union Business Park?
Ms. Eager?
I like Fork Union Commerce and Business Park.
Good lord. Too many words.
He's a good jerk guy, not marketing.
I'm gonna go with business, because I think it's, people have to span business.
I think we should defer to Mrs. Booker.
I agree.
A second.
So, do we have a motion made?
Yeah.
No, hang on, let's have an official motion made.
Okay.
Ms. Booker.
All right, I move for the supervisor to approve and designate the official name of the county-owned business park in Fork Union as the Fork Union Business Park.
Second, do we have a second? This motion's made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Ziegler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five seat.
We're going to Fork Union Booker Business Park.
Too many words.
Maybe we need to name a road at some point.
All right, D, Village of Palmyra sign, Mr. Spitzer.
Good evening, how you doing?
Wonderful, how you doing, my man?
I'm great, we're here, right? It's a day. So I'm here to talk about a new county sign going along Route fifteen, right outside the county building. It's the uh, Village of Palmyra sign. Okay, so we'll go to the next. Um, so this project was brought to the county's attention during the park committee, I don't know if y'all remember them, they were out. Um, that's a group that I worked with, they were just, they were disbanded, and then EdTAC took over the uh, the project to get the sign in. Over the two committees, there's a couple of different wording on the sign, so I've um, put the two different words out here in a minute to um, to see what y'all would prefer. Um, Jennifer Speck has been working with the village people, as they call themselves, that's what they call themselves. They really do, I didn't make that up, yeah. Um, and they're really supportive of the sign to try to get people off of Route fifteen up into Palmyra, into the area. Um, so there's not been any monies previously put forth towards this project, so I'm here to ask for not to exceed two thousand dollars to, to put the sign in, and the only reason I ask that is because I got a quote in April, and the prices are up and down, so the quote was like fifteen hundred dollars just over. So I figured it would be more than five hundred dollars to fix the sign, to complete the sign. So, as you, here's the quote that I received from Graphic Garage, so it's fifteen, fifteen hundred ninety dollars and ten cents. And like I said, I don't think I'll go over more than four hundred dollars to complete the sign. And any money is not used, we'll go back to the board of supervisors, continue to fund.
Eric, we go back one slide.
Yeah.
So it, it will be businesses in the Village of Palmyra that will be on the sign?
Can we get there? Yeah.
Not, not individual business.
Not individual business, so what I did, we have a sign, and the riders that we have under our signs in the county. If you, well, if you go back one, that, that's just what, that's where the location is, just everybody's aware.
Here's the, here's the, well, the courthouse and the admin buildings right here, here's the admin.
And the county owns this lot now, you know, we thought it was V dot for a while, that's why we were going, we couldn't have done it a long time ago, now we realize that the county actually owns that area.
So that's where the signs proposed, but looking at the signs.
So just local shops.
Yes, local shops.
And then like, we have a lot of self-guided tours in there, we have nature tours, the um, park did a lot, park did a lot, like.
Is that the Heritage Trail right there?
Yeah, that, the.
The rail trail.
Rail trail, we have the rail trail. We have tours around like the Old Stone Jail to the courthouse that the park committee put together, that people can walk, so this is one sign, so if you look, the welcome to the village of, and then the next sign says, visit the village of.
So park liked welcome, EdTAC liked visit.
And EdTAC would like to put welcome on a rider at the bottom, like where it says local shops.
So these, these bottom things are called the riders.
The riders, and they can change.
Yeah. And, and, and so the, the sign, the sign style is keeping with existing county, county building signage and stuff, so it's, it's similar. And one, you know, it, one, we wanted to, you know, draw a little direction to have people come off fifteen, and let them know there's something more this way than, 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 than what you may think, and, you know, try and draw some business to the shops, and and just kind of the, some of the historical um, components of, of, of the Village of Palmyra.
I, I like welcome to, I think if you had an additional sign at the bottom that said welcome, it's cumbersome.
Mm-hmm.
And if people see too much, they won't read any of it, and they'll just keep on driving.
Well, you gotta think, they're going forty miles an hour past it, so you don't want but one or two probably signs below it.
Yeah, hopefully they're only going thirty-five.
What, is it forty? But, and there, and these would be double-sided signs.
Yeah.
So you'd be able to see it on both sides.
I like the thicker arrow.
The, the E S D.
And, and personally, I think that uh, a lot of people hear about rail trails, and I think that you could have hanging signs underneath the self-guided walking tours to say rail trail and whatever else.
Mm-hmm. We could add more of those.
Yeah, we could potentially add something on, I mean, I, I think from, from a starter standpoint, I think this would be a good way to draw attention there, and just kind of bring some extra presence to the village.
I, I know a lot of people hear about rail trails, but they've probably never been on one, and if they see it right there, they might be inspired.
Well, I like the word welcome better than visit.
I like everything.
Me, visit almost says, it's not right here, you gotta drive this.
I thought the same.
I, I, that's just me, just as a stop of a hat.
My first thought was, I am visiting, that's, I can read the sign.
Only for six months. Only for six months, or seven months, then it's gonna be Columbia District.
I, I, I think they're just, they would be ecstatic to see a sign going there because they've been, they've been, they've been on it for a while.
So, would we want the bigger arrow on the welcome to sign and the EST abbreviated? Or just the bigger arrow on the welcome?
I like the smaller arrow and EST eighteen twenty-eight. Less cumbersome.
So welcome EST eighteen twenty-eight and the small arrow is, is what I hear from one supervisor.
I don't care about the arrow, I'm just trying to make it not look cumbersome.
I think Mrs. Oh, man, put the, just throw the pressure right on.
Okay.
I like the way you think, I like the way you think.
Alrighty, any other questions?
Thank you so very much.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. Do we have, uh, do we have a motion, Ms. Eager? All right, do you have a second? Motion's made by Ms. Eager, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye, motion number two, Ms. Eager.
Uh, yeah, number one with changes, sorry, yeah. Yep, number one with changes.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Eager, seconded by Ms. Booker, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair votes aye. Appointments, boards and commissions.
I have a question before we get into this. The, um, if somebody, by when did, did a person have to, uh, check that they would, that they applied for one of these, was there a drop dead date?
Yes, we had, we had April thirtieth for all of the, for all of them, with the exception of, um, the planning commission, because we found out a little late in the game that there was gonna be an opening, so we wanted to give enough time for someone to, I think, we, I think we tried to give thirty days to get, to get applicants in.
And then, that was for all of them over what period of time? Meaning all of them that we're gonna be dealing with this month and next month?
Yes, yes. And so we just wanted to have a solid cutoff date, so everyone applied by a certain point.
Okay.
And again, there's, on the next couple meetings, we're gonna definitely be having more, more of these board things too, we, we tried to not do every single board and committee and commission that comes in here on one night, because there's a lot of them, so we've got a lot, how many do we have on the next one, Caitlin? Don't we have the, what do we have on the next meeting? We have EDA, PVCC and, anyway, we have, we have at least three others.
Okay, yeah. And social services board has come up at some point, hasn't it, you know?
Okay. And, and, and just one thing that Mr., um, Mr. Fairchild had said to me too prior, is that Mr. Jean Odd had contacted him about the finance board, about, you said not about, not wanting to pull his name.
Right before I got here, wanted to pull his name from the finance board.
And the, the local rent is, aside the name, meaning that they want to be reappointed.
Yeah, the, the I, the parentheses with an I means they're, they're the incumbent, they're, they're all.
All right, I got a question about that one.
Yep.
You got two positions, but you got him being the incumbent in both.
Well, yeah, well, I mean.
I'm not trying to be as smart as that one.
Yeah, but, yeah, but he, they, they did the same like in the library board trustees, it's just showing it through.
I, I just had to take it back.
Yes.
I'm having fun.
Yeah, he's, he, he has it.
I, 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 I'm just messing around, because there's only two and there's two positions, that one's pretty cut and dry.
So, how do we do this, do we?
We, we talk about each one individually. So the agriculture, ag-forestry board is pretty simple, there are two people up for it and there's two names, let's do it. I mean, we'll, we'll talk about each one, finance board, citizen representative. You got Mr. Garcia, Mr. Hodge, and Nelson Cook Jr. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about anyone?
Or maybe the applicants would like.
Or if the applicant would like to speak.
Supervisors, Rudy Garcia, eight oh two Ravenna Woods Drive, Fork Union, Virginia. Um, I've been on the finance board.
Damn.
Well, I mean, you know, we're all getting older.
I guess so. Um, so I've been on the finance board a number of years now, um, when you, when the Board of Supervisors reinstituted the finance board, they asked if I would serve, and I did, so I've had the pleasure of working with both Ms. Booker and with Mr. Sheridan. Um, I think we've done a very good job of stewarding the finances, um, we've helped the treasurer um, realize that there's some ways for her to put the money to use, and she has come to rely on the finance committee to give her guidance. So, I would be more than happy to continue service to the county, subject to your question, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir, is anyone else? All right, seeing none? No, just for the finance board right now.
If there's nobody else that wants to speak, I've got a question.
Hello? Uh, is that Mr. Hodge? All right, Mr. Hodge, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for your time this evening, supervisors, and I apologize that I couldn't be there in person, but I had to be out of state. Um, for the past four years, I've worked for the county and I've done a lot of work with the treasurer and built a good working relationship with her, delivering, um, products such as Positive Pay, I'm working on ACH, and I'm also working on the credit card projects. And a previous experience I bring to the table, I was on the Board of Directors of Security Printing and Systems over a six-year period, and for two of the years I was on the finance board for that, where we had to manage pension funds, um, our cash reserves, and ensure our investments were properly made, um, to protect the cash reserves, but then also make sure the right amounts were available to meet our budgetary needs. Um, and I look forward to serving the county, and I thank you for your time and your favorable consideration.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, is Mr. Cook by chance online?
All right, does anyone have any comments, questions?
So, how many, uh, members are there of the finance board?
Mr. Sheridan, the chair, whoever it is, that, uh, the treasurer, and then one.
Okay, and does the chair of the board automatically serve as the chair of the?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Sort of thought, thank you.
Alrighty. Yeah, I was one of the people that pushed hard to reinstate this committee, uh, certainly I asked Mr. Garcia at the time, if he'd be interested in it. You know, you've had the pleasure of working with him, or so, and, and I think as he stated, he's got a lot of good, not to take away from Mr. Hodge, uh, uh, who has extensive experience as well too, but, uh, it, it's been, uh, it's been a road to get this committee back up in money and get it to where it is, and I would certainly encourage the board to vote for Mr. Garcia.
You have a motion? Oh, hang on.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah.
Yeah, that'll come later, but we need to decide which ones, and we know which to do in the motion.
Okay.
All right, so. We can't, I mean, usually we, we'll vote on them as they come up and then make the motion for, because that'll, that'll be the determining factor of the motion.
But it does seem an awkward way to go about it, for sure.
Why don't we just vote for each one?
I think it'll be more efficient to vote.
Vote as we go, and the only reason I'm saying that, this is not a motion being made, but we know we can sit here and have seventy-five different motions before we get the exact names of everybody. By five position, and then go from there.
All right, uh, who, who is, who would like Mr. Garcia? All right, so, so, so we already got three, so it'll be Mr. Garcia. I mean, we can go further, but. All right, and so next is library board of trustees, and I think they shared the, the only thing I will say about this one is, we have four up for three positions, correct? Um, I had one person reach out to me to talk about this, and the president has felt very strongly about Ms. Goshorn and Ms. Haley.
And I also talked to her yesterday.
And I know Ms. Haley has been a teacher back in the county, grew up here, but she's been teaching, still teaching at Tassie's.
And he has an American speech.
Uh, is there, are there any of the board of, library board of trustees, uh, the present or online, wish to speak? I haven't seen any of them on that one, going back and forth. We, we're just looking for three.
Three.
I'm correct? Yes.
I, I agree with Mrs. Eager as well too, I think he's, uh, and, and I think the diversity in terms of age, he's, he's a class as well too, and he was involved in the schools.
I will say this much, uh, in my youth group, he is the oldest young man I know. I had a couple that I grew up with that were like that, but Hayden could, anyway. Yeah, and Ms. Goshorn, Ms. Haley. Anyone?
I don't think I know Mrs. Patterson, sorry.
I mean.
Hayden Paris, um, I mean, his resume for a young man his age, of all the things he's done, the cover letter that he did, I mean, just.
That boy's been going to school for a very long time.
Yeah.
I've held back for it.
I think since like two or something.
Like I said, he's one of the oldest young people I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would, I would personally go for Barbara, Sharon and Hayden.
Enough head nods on that, alrighty, and now, planning commission in the Columbia District, do we have Mr. Zimmer or Mr. Bonca, uh, Boncaglio going?
I've also served with him as well too, and would agree with that.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to say this against Mr. Zimmer, because I think he's an absolute asset too, it's because of, you talk about the differing model spaces, what he brings with the agriculture portion of it, but, uh, uh, Mr. Boncaglio is looking up to teach his kids. Super gentleman. I have no.
Chairman of the BCA.
Oh, that's.
Okay. GED, that's it, that, that, that's me.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, 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 I think Mr. Zimmer's done a great job. We just support him, and the others. Okay, so we've got Mr. Zimmer. Next up, uh, do we have Mr. Goode or Ms. Russell here to speak? Both here, okay, Ms. Russell, come on up.
Hi, I'm Jerry Russell, eight sixty-four Ravenna Woods Drive, Rudy's neighbor. Um, I have been in Fluvana County twice now, but that's six years this time, and I've taken the leadership when I came back this time. Um, and I have been the past president for the Fluvana SPCA, and I'm currently the treasurer for them. So I just want to continue my involvement with the community, and, um, I have a accounting degree, for what it's worth, and, um, I was a real estate paralegal a long time ago, I'm currently a Realtor, but, um, I just think I could do a good job for the community, and like to be more involved, and one day take Moselle's place.
I know.
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm, so I thought this would be a good stepping stone. And I'm still the treasurer for the SPCA. So, any questions?
Any thoughts on, on, on how the planning commission, you know, should, should approach things, have you given that any consideration?
I really haven't, um, I'm just, I guess I'm open, and I think I could bring a, a fresh impact into it, you know, just a fresh set of eyes. Um, I like the county, I intend to stay, and I'd like to see where it goes.
The only thing I will tell you is, you, to, the position you take won't be Ms. Booker's, it'd be my.
Oh, okay.
With the new zoning.
Okay.
You guys, anything north of fifteen votes in Columbia now.
Oh.
Anything north of fifteen or north of the sewer plant.
I'm not, I'm, am I south of fifteen?
No, ma'am.
Is that considered north or north?
Oh, I'm six, I said fifteen.
Six, okay. Yeah.
I drive the bus back there every day by y'all.
Okay.
I gotta make it back there and go fishing for them, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I saw a hand raised in the back.
Good evening, members of the board. Y'all doing all right this evening? Good, good, um, I know I shared my resume with you all this week via email, so I want to spend the time this evening to sort of, um, tell you a little bit more about myself, where I come from, um, and sort of how I would approach things myself, uh, where I to be appointed to the planning commission this evening. I was born in Chesterfield County, um, while I was born there, I've come to call Fluvana home over the last seven, eight years. Shortly after graduating from Hampton Sydney, I accepted a teaching position at Fork Union Military Academy. I too have had the overseas experience where people hear about us, I hear about that all the time. Um, and that kind of goes to my next point, when I arrived at Fork Union, uh, in twenty fifteen, I knew little about the Fluvana community, um, other than the academy itself. However, shortly after arriving at Fork Union, I met my wife, Kate Pendergrass, who some of you probably know. Um, she was raised here in Fluvana County and lived most of her childhood in Fork Union. Her mother and father were raised here in Fluvana County, both are maternal and paternal grandparents, the Pendergrasses and the Campbells retired here in the county. So as a twenty-three-year-old outsider from Chesterfield County, did not take me long to realize how special Fluvana County was. Didn't take me long to come to love it myself. So fast forward seven years, Kate and I have now been married for five years, and to this day, we can't think of a better place to raise a family than Fluvana County. As I think about this statement, my mind naturally begs several questions, what made me love Fluvana so much that I wanted to stay here? What made Kate love Fluvana so much that she wanted to stay here, or come back here after leaving a few years after college? What made my in-laws love Fluvana so much that they wanted to raise her here? And what made the Campbells and the Pendergrasses love Fluvana so much that they wanted to retire here after they finished their respective works in the county? Put in the context of y'all's lives, I'm sure the five of you probably, as longstanding members and leaders of this community, have asked similar questions like these over the years, and while I'm sure that your five answers might not be identical, all answers will probably eventually point back to two things, lifestyle and potential. How do I know this? I don't want to speak for you, but because lifestyle and potential are what lies at the heart of the county's comprehensive plan, a document that saved Mr. Fairchild, four of you on the stage either had a hand in, um, composing as, either as a commissioner yourself, or as a member of the board. So let's start with lifestyle. Each of us in this room knows that for centuries, Fluvana has maintained a rural character. To a certain extent, I think all Fluvana County citizens are proud of and enjoy the rural lifestyle that characterizes our county. For some of us, we enjoy it because we grew up around noise, we grew up around traffic, we stopped at a stoplight on the, on the way to school every quarter mile. Some like Kate and her family, perhaps the five of you love it because it's all you've ever really known. Nonetheless, I don't think any of us wants to see our county fail to keep pace, I don't think any of us wants to see our county fail to provide our citizens with the relative. I don't think any of us wants to see our county fail to provide our citizens with the relative comforts and conveniences of a twenty-first century style of living. That wouldn't be responsible leadership or stewardship. And that's what leads me to potential. As I stated earlier, I moved to Fluvana in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, if I had a dollar for every time someone used, beginning with my mother-in-law and my wife, used, uh, the word potential to describe the county since I moved here, I'd probably be able to retire at the age of thirty. Concerning the discussion at hand, potential is obviously associated with growth. Um, that word is sprinkled throughout the, uh, the comprehensive plan. Nonetheless, growth and rural are two concepts that on the surface seem to clash, if you will. So the question we have to ask each other is how do we balance these two seemingly contradictory things that we love so much about our county? The answer to that question is responsible growth. And I know. You would like to know what responsible growth looks like or what I would like, what I think responsible growth looks like. It involves asking a series of questions when making decisions about a potential project. Question, and this list of questions is not exhaustive, but I do have a few here for you. Does this growth provide those in our community with a better standing of living? If so, how? Will this growth impact the cost of living in the county? How will this growth conflict with our rural lifestyle? If it does, how do we minimize this conflict without completely disregarding goth- growth that could seriously benefit the people who live here? Is this growth a potential source of revenue for the county? Or are there fiscal consequences that we need to consider and perhaps overcome? Is there perhaps a better place in the county for this growth to occur? Is this growth sustainable and environmentally sound? If not, how do we address this? You see, a responsible growth mindset doesn't rush to judgment one way or another about a particular project. It does not have an all-growth is good or an all-growth is bad mindset. It is inductive, inquisitive, open-minded approach. If that's how growth is approached in this county, then our rural character can live on, even as we make room for growth that, that, even as we make room for growth that meets the demands of the twenty-first century. The word responsible is used to describe growth countless times in the comprehensive plan. And should you appoint me as a commissioner this evening, that is the approach that I vow to take when making recommendations to you all on projects that are brought before the board. I thank you, each of you for the, your time this evening, and I also thank each of you for your longstanding service to our community.
Thank you so much for coming.
I thought when he, when he said it didn't take him long to realize how grateful the animal was, I thought he was gonna say Kate.
That's what I was, that's what I would have said.
She's not bad.
Oh, I.
So, what, what is your position at FUMA N?
So I'm the academic dean at, at Fork Union, uh, taught there in the middle school for three years, upper school for one year, and since twenty nineteen, I've been, um. The academic dean there.
So that means running, uh, all student and teacher?
Ye- yes, sir, so I'm in charge of basically everything academics at the academy, I would be considered a, a principal. Um, our dean of students would be the commandant, the military disciplinary side of the school, on the academic side of the school, so. Um, I'm the hiring manager for, you know, teachers and, um, faculty and, and make determinations about, you know, transfer credits from, you know, we get kids coming from all over the world, how do we? Make sure that their graduation requirements meet ours and how do we make sure that, you know, they're, they're on the right track and, you know, I, I don't directly oversee it, but I oversee the person who oversees our college counseling. Um, and things like that, so anything really related to academics runs directly through me first.
And how long have you been in that position?
Three years now, this is the end of my third year.
That means in your late twenties, you're in that position.
I started twenty-seven, yes, sir.
Wow.
I think that international experience, uh, is a unique perspective.
I, I haven't personally had it, I, I actually have, have heard people tell me though.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, folks, I tell you one thing, I love having great qualified candidates and having multiple candidates. Do you have anyone?
I, I just make the comment, the, the Chesterfield piece of it is interesting to me because there's been such a change in Chesterfield, talking about planning. Over the past twenty or thirty years, it used to be farmland and now it's such, uh, such.
Still has some sections that do look like some store.
Yeah.
When you get further south than east.
Well, it's also, uh, I mean Cindy, uh, girlfriend is from there, boy, yeah, there are parts of it, but. Boy, three sixty is, uh, not the place it used to be, that's for sure, and it's a lot of change to learn from both, both good and bad there.
Yeah. Alright. It is very difficult to sit up there and do what we do when we have multiple people that are very capable of being assets. We have to choose.
We generally give preference to the.
Mr. Eager, Mr. Go or Ms. Russell?
That's a good point.
We haven't had any academy people in, involved with much outside. So, uh, yeah. Okay, so, alright, so we're good, and then with Ms. Murray Key, I like these, there's one.
There's one, and I think she does a good job and she brings a unique perspective as well, too, and, you know, and, and again, we have the diversity and a whole different perspective.
We talked about a lot of what we have here.
And I would certainly encourage Mrs. Russell to apply for some of the other positions that are coming up.
Absolutely.
We have two more rounds, so thank you very much.
Um, alright, do we have a motion? Were you able to, yup, you already put it.
Mr. Chairman, when you, when you deal with the motion, I think the record should be clear that the.
Each one with the ones that we chose.
Yes, but what I was gonna point out was that, that Mr. Go's position would begin immediately.
Correct.
Oh, interesting.
That, that's the only one that begins immediately, it was discussed the resignation.
Yeah.
The other, again, July first. Alright, do we have to name each name or can we say those that we?
I think you should.
Okay, alright.
I'm with the Board of Supervisors, approved following Board of Commission, or Commission or Committee appointments. Ag Forest, August, Advisory Council, Landowner Andrew Pullen, Ag Forest, District Advisor Council, Landowner Tim Hodge. Finance Board Citizen Representative Rudy Garcia, Library Board of Trustees at Large Barbara Dashwin. Uh, Library Board of Trustees at Large Sharon Haley, Library Board of Trustees Charles Hayden Thomas Parish. Planning Commission, Columbia Ed Zimmer. Planning Commission Ravanna, Chikata Markey, all of those with a beginning term of seven, one. I haven't, I haven't left it out, and Planning Commission Fork Union dated ago with the position starting immediately.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion been made for Mr. O'Brien, second amendment Booker, all favor say aye.
Ah.
Oppose, chair votes aye, now here's my question. Because of redistricting, we probably need to look back at all things, because when the next election comes around, is anybody gonna, they get to serve their term?
The border is the river. So they're okay.
No, the, the border is the river until you get to Palmyra, then it becomes fifteen to Route Six. I don't think, I, I think we're okay, because Ed lives north of me. Ed lives north of me.
Okay, say that again, the border is the river all the way to.
From Palmyra.
From Palmyra, Columbia goes fifteen to six.
No.
It stays the river, then I'm wrong, man, Ms. Russell, it would be the Fork Union, I apologize.
You scared me, I will tell you.
I thought, I thought we had moved it, oh, that was the other plan. I, that's, I, that's absolutely, I'm glad, I make mistakes every day, I ain't got no problem with it.
But I tell you, Mrs. Booker's in for another twelve years, so, you know.
She keeps getting younger, so, I keep trying, I keep getting older, and I'm looking older than she is.
My second.
We're all. Much older than she is.
Exactly, the, everybody, this, nevermind. Alright, we have no presentations, the next up is Consent Agenda. F, Minutes of May Fourth, twenty twenty-two, Ms. Elise. G, Union Mills Agricultural Forestal District Review and Renewal, Mr. Oberstree. Okay, my bad. I, 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 I've told you, I'm tired, this week's killing. H, Accounts Payable Report for April twenty twenty-two. Is there anything we need to pull? Nope, do I have a motion?
Someone.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second amendment Booker, all favor say aye. Oppose, chair votes aye. Alright, so now to unfinished business.
So, quick ones, the arts, MOU, so, we had a good conversation between Ms. Harris, myself, with, uh. Ms. Harris, Sharon Harris, and, and, and I think we've come to a agreement that. That the town can utilize this space for, from August until basically the last meeting in May. For the two days a week that we're gonna need for the planning commission, the, the board, the planning commission, and then the board again the third week, so again. The board will be here the first, um, so, basically first Wednesday, Thursday of the month, Wednesday for the board day, then break down. Planning commission will be following the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the third week, uh, the board again Wednesday, Thursday, and then there's one whole week per month that's, that's open for things. And then again, you know, the weekends and everything, and really one of the big sticking points with, with the Arts Council and Ms. Harris. Was having this space open in June and July during the summer, so a few programs, and so what we discussed is, is doing that, and then. The board would meet from two meetings in June and the one meeting in July.
Yeah, I saw one issue, once again, I may be making another mistake, sorry. February, March, April, we need to get a week. When we're talking about first and third week.
Well, yes, so. It'll be, it'll be four weeks out of those three months, but yes.
Correct, I, 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 just make sure that that's in there, I mean, I, if we could get it done in two meetings, I'd be all for that.
And what we do is we go forward. Years, how long does this schedule last? How long do we?
Are we having another spot or the board wants to make more permanent spot, I mean. I, because really the only place we have, we have here, we have, we have the community center which would require some upgrades, or in the board, what's that?
Which is me.
Or, or, you know, at some point. Now, what's it's the, the basement, the plant, the basement, the avenue.
The, the quick answer to me is however long we want to keep renewing the agreement. Whatever things lead us to something else, the.
Well, no, no, I mean, I think that the, the attention what Ms. Booker is getting to is, how do we free the space up for, you know, theater groups and, and performances, because. It's still cumbersome to have the setup if you're gonna do a theater presentation. Um, I mean, I'm not saying they can't do it, and I think there's more to it for the summer programs that the Arts Council wants to run, but. Um, it, it certainly makes cumbersome for performers to have to deal with that if they're, if they're coming through here.
So, so.
You know, what we're talking about is we wouldn't be in here at all in June and July, we would let the Arts Council have June and July, well, basically the last week in May and then June and July. They would have, like I said, we would have our meeting, it was probably July.
It's a one-year agreement, right?
We're making a three-year agreement with, with, with one year.
Oh, yeah, 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 with one, and, and I wasn't trying to cut your point short, Mazel, I'm, all I was kind of saying was. In the scope of that we have these other items this evening, still to go to closed session, we won't resolve what that is tonight anyway. And I think we need to feel good at figuring out what the good agreement is and.
At the end of the day, one thing you need to remember is this, this space belongs to the county. And I, I have no axe to grind with, with the Arts Council. But your operations and those of the planning commission are essential governmental operations, they have to be done, they have to be done a certain way. I think the idea of negotiating with the, with the Arts Council is absolutely appropriate, taking account of their, their interests. But if we came to longer heads, the answer is perfectly clear, and that is the board prevails.
Oh, and I hate to put money in another space somewhere, since we just put fifteen million dollars or fourteen million dollars towards a, um, building.
Oh.
As far as part of our financing that we did.
Yeah.
By me.
We haven't done, we haven't finished the.
No, no, we haven't finished it, but if we're putting that money towards our new space, I just hate to put a million dollars or seven hundred thousand.
The only thing I will say about that is, in the perfect world, it would be ideal to have a permanent meeting space for the board and, and. And I can tell you, even in that building, some of the things that were gonna be done, maybe the basement would need to be done, but I. I think if the board somewhat put it in there, there may be a way to do it where maybe it wasn't expensive as originally, but maybe it is.
Well, it seemed to me that, that, I mean, well, another quick thing, as you said, we can table this to, to later on, but just very briefly, you know, it sounded like. For the, for the, for the Fork Union. Community center that we were just really talking about baffling the space more than anything else. But if we're gonna put an industrial park in there and we're looking for growth in that area, eventually that, that, that center is something that probably the people around there are gonna want to use. And so that may be a wise investment as well.
We call that place Fluvana County Community Center. You walk in and we've done a lot of updates, can you see this, citizens, we get our will this night. You walk into the auditorium, it needs to be updated. I'm ashamed that we call it Fluvana County, nobody uses it. We've almost got a commercial kitchen, I think we need a few more things. We can have weddings, we need to do the windows, the floors, we can get comfortable chairs that you can stack. You can get tables on that stage where we could be, there could be other activities that go on, and my. Jerome's picture is outside of that door because that was dedicated to him because he helped to keep that building open. And it's embarrassing to come in there and the air conditioning is making more noise than it should. You can't tell me that in twenty twenty-two, we cannot have a quiet HP, VAC condition in there. And that that is not a place where people can come and have weddings and parties and anniversaries. It is just the. It's only there sometimes. Um, that place has history, bought in and has a huge history. Um, access to, and, and they've got extra rooms, and we just need to fix it up and make it decent. I sacked off the stage, the stage is not big as this one. But we could, if we could go there, you got people sitting down here, we got spaces to sit down at the final of our funeral as well. But I'm finished with it because I think I've said, oh, I've done all I can, I've said all I can say, I gave it every reason that I can, and. It doesn't seem to turn anyway of the up, so. And I'm just, well. We do what we have to do, but this place has all programs throughout the year. We have, um, community choirs in here. And, um, you go to Melissa and first thing to see on two oh eight is the arts center. We even advertise in Melissa's art programs in our Fluvana review, haven't you seen them? Every, every.
We're not advertising, they're advertising.
They're advertising. And we can't have, we, we can't even advertise for our, for our own art council.
Do, uh, uh, and, and, and sort of to go back to Mr. Payne's point about, yes, this is essential for the board, but. By the same token, I think that when you have, uh, a, 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 a group of people that are trying to promote the arts and, and are very excited about it, dynamic. And we're really putting a damper on it by.
I agree.
So I mean, I really think we should explore, and I'm not necessarily in favor of the space downstairs, although that's crazy.
Right, well, let's, let's go back to what we're talking about, and that's the memorandum of understanding right now, because everything we talked about is nothing we can do right now. So I think.
It's a memorandum of understanding between the. It's a memorandum of understanding between the county and the Arts Council to to just open this up as much as possible. Be in here and and if the board says, let's go forward, that Ms. Harris has already kind of warned him to have it bring a formal action for the board. And then while we get that going, even if the board says we want to go be in the community center and the board says that's the way where we need to go, then we'll start working to see what we need to do to make that happen and figure out what the fixes are.
Would that be this summer? We can move over to.
Okay. That board meeting would be at the.
Okay.
Yeah, and that we're not approving the M O U because we haven't seen it.
But go forward, but make sure we have that we February, March, all those dates.
I just sent an email. We had missed that.
Y'all think I didn't read?
No, I'm very happy with that. Ms. Harris has the newly revised the other M O U in hand right now. Um, but the hope for fingers crossed, everything I got cross planned, just bring it to you June first, R and E.
That was good. Thank you so very much. All right, second thing, Mr. Dog.
Z T A twenty one oh three. So again, this was a a zoning text amendment to change change the density in our change density in the R four zoning. Was it not?
It was. You you have a copy of it here. What's 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 added? The R four district already contemplates multi-family dwellings. But it hasn't, the R four density is approximately two point nine units an acre. Uh, this would increase the the density permitted for multi-family dwellings in the R four district to five point five one units an acre. But it's limited to areas which are subjected to a plan, a common plan of development, and the property served by central water and central sewer. So so everybody knows that this is intended to cover Marina Point Lake. It is not limited to that, but it would it would be, it would cover that.
It is limited to it only because that is the current R four
That's.
place right now. I I think that this is, I think we should table this discussion because we have ninety days left on this, and I imagine there's going to be some feelings about.
Well, and the problem is, we just, I mean, from from like I said, we're not looking for, we're going to have to bring it back to the board before, I guess, is it August or?
It was August something, yeah.
Me was more August the eighth.
I think so. We have to, we probably have to bring it back by the first.
You all voted, excuse me, Chairman, Chairman. You all voted last August eight eighteen twenty twenty one to bring it to your Jan- uh, July sixth meeting, the first meeting, the first or only meeting, excuse me. And the Marina Point folks, even though we have, you know, opportunities in like Zion's to do this in R four. They've asked us if it's appropriate to come back before you, and basically, Mr. Payne and I indicated that you do have to do something, act upon it, and remember, it's a zoning text amendment that the county brought forward that just happens to be applicable to Marina Point. So we are actually the um, the planning commission and the board, we're actually the applicant to change it in the zoning ordinance.
The one that we could just break back to the board, just as we do with the old, everything, the young public here, uh, when it was done before, it's closed, so so they don't publicize it. And so the board just has to take action, whether they approve, deny, or.
Yeah. Well, you won't be able to, uh, Mr. Payne, if this is correct, you won't be able to defer it. You have to either approve or. Oh, previously, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fairchild. So so the reason why that they chose at the board at the time was because we are working on the comprehensive plan. So in relative um, review of working on the comprehensive plan, as you know, in the process, what we're currently, we've been function uh, functionally working on the rural preservation, rural clustering, all the things that um, that pertain to non-growth or non-development or limited growth. So basically, what this amendment would do would allow for you to increase it, as Mr. Payne said, from two point nine up to, what was it, five point five? So basically, from three to five and a half. No, there's not any R four, right? Yeah, and yet, as of now, so correct. And so in our final open house on Thursday, um, June ninth, we're going to be talking about getting into the growth areas and areas around the shopping centers on the lake and things like that, because we were wrapping that portion up before summer. But from the Zion Crossroads area plan perspective, um, we are going to be working with Louisa County on these type of things, the R four density, the and it's a mixed-use density, not the R four and and mixed-use like R three. So and then the plan unit development comp- uh, component, as Mr. Payne said. So we really think, uh, as Mr. Payne and I talked, that you you need to remove this R four um, text amendment at this time until the comprehensive plan is completed and not in process. We can, we can just withdraw it and so it was up, Mr. Chairman, two meetings. Yeah, if you if you make it, yeah. Correct, that's a very good point. Okay, and well, yep, yes, sir, thank you.
All right. I felt a little bit of a role. So one, we had a presentation that came from the board two meetings ago, and we had hoped that the B O S retreat would be sooner because we wanted potentially talk about some of that during that, but as it stands right now, we got, we got the B O S retreat, like I said, we've got a proposal there for potential August twenty seven. August twenty seven, it it's a one, we didn't ask. It's a Saturday. August twenty seven is Saturday. We didn't necessarily want to slow down on that, but I know you all had some questions on that. So would you prefer us to run back maybe a a little bit more of a presentation on that again, and maybe people something, then you'd rather just have us kind of move forward with the whole plan and then bring it forward as a draft, and then maybe each other at that at that point. You just don't want to necessarily pump brakes on it. But I understand that maybe the board has some more questions, and maybe seeing the whole plan and maybe that'll live on time.
Correct, yes. A- as I mentioned, it, you know, database is a bad term. Um, from the I T world, I think it's a customer relationship manager. Um, and that that again will track the visits and all of that, and happy to share like a a layout of what it looks like. Um, but it also it it could, it tracks uh, also proprietary information that is not foible. Again, I I actually talked to to Mr. Payne before this meeting to say, hey, we're going to, can we talk about um, what's foible and what's not, and kind of lead to there. So um, again, it mostly will track, you know, the the date of the visit, any any types of points that um, are red flags in in our industry, and that means that, you know, they they need to be hand-holed or they need some additional information. So um, as as far as like their trade areas, there's a lot of metrics in there that we can share. Um, but.
Well, I I mean, I think if the board's like, well, let's 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 staff or board, and 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 I think that one, that's of particular interest, we can we can we can resume with that, that that goal, one of those items under that goal, but it kind of got that one a little bit further, think about that. But I would like to be able to bring back the plan to keep the keep the work going with our consultants and bring back something of a draft, and and you know, like I said, it's a draft, it's it's not final. So if there's elections in that more of a finalized draft, we can sort of change that.
In a sense, not final, but also to get to a point of all this time, and that's something that we can consider when we need to finalize this. That we less potential or will can edit it. For one, I mean, it's a little more time. So it would be just, you know, really spend more time.
No, I wasn't talking too small. I I mean, when we rub this back, I think the board has some questions on some goals, and and so some kind of the, I think, feedback that we got, maybe we're going to discuss this more after the retreat. Although the retreat's not going to be until potentially August, I would hate for us to to slow down the work that our consultants are doing, we could happen to do that. But we've got good momentum going, and again, it doesn't have to be final, but but I understand. Well, again, ju- just remember from this, this, these are the goals that came out of all the interviews from from all the stakeholders. So so yes, this is, this is definitely a board document. I guess one thing I would want to be mindful of is if the board said, we want all these groups to participate in this, but we don't want to, let you say it. I I don't know what each of what, we want to say that all the stakeholders really channeled in on one of these things, but we said we need a lot of that. Ultimately, it's the board's academic development plan, but I would I would want to just be careful that we're not silencing those that that we want to participate in, in give the feedback.
Well, I agree. We're also deal with the years and experiences and things. We haven't dealt and get in some cases. I'm not sure the process is, I'm sure we all saw it.
So I think so I think what I hear is, um, and there are five goals. We identified five goals, but it's the action items that keep you you all keep hanging up on. And I think as as you've pointed out, we can strike those. So if we continue to move forward and by the the retreat, we bring you the the full plan, you can kind of go a deeper dive into it and, you know, maybe. Yes. Well, well, what they did was they did, they did all the interviews. Sorry, they did all of the interviews, and when they found a common theme, so it had to be repeated three times throughout all of those interviews in order to make it as a action item on our on our goals. So uh, but in this, the rest of the strategic plan, you're going to have the the forward, which will have all of the information, then you'll have the goals, but you'll also have that that and um, data analysis in the back as a appendix. So you'll get to see everything all laid out together. Yeah. So move forward with the full plan to to present to you, draft plan, yes, yes, draft plan. Yes, hear you. I hear you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a proposal here to move forward, facilitators do the O S retreat. It's similar to what was done before. You've got kind of the framework, who's doing, what the credentials are, but there's costs to do with it. Um, the board did this seven years ago, I would say around the same time. Yeah, you know, and certainly, you know, one, we, we can discuss some conflict, we can discuss some academic, to be clear, and then come up with our strategic initiatives. And so those are kind of the three things that I see that have fit into the board's roadmap for the next couple of years. Well, yeah, a- and part of this too, what you said. So conduct four in a interview by questionnaires, individual board members, and collaborative demonstration. Some of they need retreat, including discussion of board goals, priorities, time planning, delivery, deliver a summary document of the result. So I mean. I want to let them know if it's more marks. No, I mean, one eight hour, every day, sad, one eight hour. Well, we, we were going with two, and we, we, we had lots of. We, we don't even have to do the search on, searching. We got an initial one and, and, and I, what the initial part was, well, I said. Well, no, when I talk to this one, really, what they normally do it for.
All right, all right, just, just.
So now we're talking about.
So I, I would, I would. I didn't talk in general. I don't think so is necessarily. Or if it was, if I did something, it would probably. To say that. I should vote for a document that ninety percent, ninety percent. Into the standing that I can buy it to, five percent, I think. Long with them there. This is some socialists, I don't think, uh, pay or issue. They're failing to accept. I, I hear you. They're failing to accept the. Too much social justice stuff, I mean, I think it shouldn't be. That, there's no name. She said, I work with some environments. And you follow, we gave her some of the problems here. Yes. There'd be things that, if you were in the event, if you defined the policy that would be all of, just because of the hurt from some people. Have to imagine this thing could be an attitude that can not. I don't think. And actually. Uh, one of the Oscars. Person found in feet and. I'm not too. Okay. Do you? Do you need ready to come back, come back, she's not ready to come back? This table, this table, we're done with. We're done, okay, guys, this one's taken, what does this take, is there any users? I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, that.
You have said. You have said the first. Facts are second to set. And it says, and as of January, you're. Now, it, what, Ron. The truth about it. Where was all this control? When you enterprise the, the, the roots for here. Because I was just remembering the three rooms, any kind of comments, you have to kind of do it. It was, this is something that I think you have to change in the next year, but I'm not sure you can.
I think. I, I. Now, oh, it's been my phone, the old, the old. With somebody that managed to go down on everything. We're the only county in there that's underlord, that's look forward and low. A lot of people tend to get forward enough and then you. We changed how we found this school to do towards that year and a half. But we more than. Doesn't mean, we, we, we more than. I know this is a great. Organization. I stand, I stand in the mission of, and the search of, about how, as well as we got the board and. After a while.
What? If it's Russian. Yeah. I thought you could say the other side. Shouldn't worry. Good thing for. All I'm saying is. Those votes are necessary. A lot of people think. That that we decided to do this. We. And not less. You're not family. You have to live. Home is either your people and your family. The homework doesn't go on. They are not watching. Or what's. Or they don't have reading paper. Well, they're doing it. It's not so much the break. Those people just can be. They don't understand. As soon as I spoke. Everyone.
Part of it.
I mean, it's it's a slippery slope. For things. Sense that. All. Both starting uh uh. Of staying in the process. We get it. They are the use. The use of their wants to. They they were. You know. Sorry. I was gonna. Those way. I was talking about this. I'm glad they. They have. All of us. No, no. I just. Yeah. I'm very nice with this. So. Same as you guys. The. Starting with the. Same with the. I'm not talking about. So many wanting kids. What they perceive. Possibly not. It's not as if you want us. And possibly. So. The difference here probably is they. 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 They're wide. My. That's. People are. Part of your. I did. There's a. Just here. I know. Thank you, Sam. Our girl set. Now call the comment. Anyone who speaks, please step in. Please state your name and your address. Please keep comments five minutes on topic directly to the court. Anyone who speaks with that. Anyone in the audience? Do you want to line? No one's going to line. I'm not close. Set. Now call the comment. Sure. Second two dot two S. Next, I'm just. So that. Both. Both. Here with that.
Freddy. Mr. Chairman, this is me, Mr. President. This is where I can begin. I can do about it. I don't know what's going on. And you will close with this. You need to hear this guy's story. That's right. What you take on the show, right? I say about this quarter and see. Go back, fair down. Here goes out, we have a close session. Now, push to go. That's that. What you take on the secret, take about this quarter. I'll page that out. Both, here goes that.